So I was not able to get in touch with anyone from LTC, not really sure. Sure.
Fan is coming up on the TV now.
Oh, good. Okay.
They just sent it in the chat too.
Yeah, I can, I can hear the volume.
Great. Perfect. Thank you to everyone who brought that to our attention. Sorry about that.
Okay, so moving along, we were finishing up on the Father Moisette public hearing on trees. So if anybody wants to call in, has any questions, we did have a couple of questions and a call in. I'll open it up and see if anybody else wants to call in at this time. Anybody else like to speak? If not, I believe we had a motion by Mr. Fichette, which was second by Mr. Lockhart. So we have a motion made in second. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, so I'm liking that motion as approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. If we could just move along quickly to the extension request, we have a 110 industrial app has submitted a request for a two-year extension to the site plan review approval that would expire in July of 2020. Maybe hear from the applicants for 110 industrial app, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Molessey, looking to being associates. We were the engineer of record back a couple of years ago when this project was in front of the planning board. We are asking for an extension of time for two years to extend the site plan approval, so we can have that time to get things moving along. About a month and a half or so ago, we were doing the same thing in front of the conservation commission. We had asked for an extension to the euro conditions and were granted that extension. So very simply, Mr. Chair, we're just here asking for that time extension. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any of the board members have any questions? No questions? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the extension for the two-year period.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, that motion is allowed. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Have a great night.
Thank you. Moving along just under the old of the business, we have requests for minor modification on two Prince Ave and one Markley Way. For a minor modification to approval of a site plan for two. For the data center at two Prince Ave and one Markley Way, the applicant is seeking permission to install two thirty-five foot water tank. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Tonight you'll be hearing from Theo Kinderman, who is the site engineer, as well as Luke Kipfer, who is the onsite engineer at the Markley plant, as well as Attorney George Leides. You are correct, we are seeking a modification of a prior approved site plan. We are requesting that we are able to install one additional water tank at the present time. And while we had approval under this, the site plan to have the water tanks, we are requesting to move them to the Carter Street side. And it's important, as the engineers will present to you, the Carter Street side is where the source of the water line exists. It makes for the most efficient source of the water for these water tanks. And these water tanks are needed to support this facility for various operations, including their air conditioning and cooling system. Now, this project was permitted and approved, the site plan was approved five years ago. What this did was, this was the old Prince spaghetti plant. And Markley came in, vastly improved the area and placed this enormous data storage facility there at the site. It's an extremely sophisticated site, I believe members of the planning board have been out there. And toward the site, there are, it is a data storage facility with the likes of Netflix, State Street Bank, just to name a few. So with that being said, I would like to have the Theo Kindermans go through some of the description of what he plans to do and how he plans to do this. And I just want to remind the board is that this is an industrial site where the applicant is looking to provide the storage tank to improve their facility. So with that being said, Theo, if you would go through the modifications to the site plan.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you, George. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for entertaining our modification tonight. My name is Theo Kindermans. I am a senior principal with Santa Consulting. In Boston, we are the site planners, site engineers for, for the site. And this is, it's good to be back. I've been, I think, I think hearing that this project has had before you. If I may share the screen. And I will quickly share my screen here. This is. And this is, as, as George said, we had our original approval for the site plan was done in June of two thousand and fifteen, we had adjustments that were made. But this was really the approved site plan as you were, as you have it on file or that was approved in in mid twenty fifteen. You know, there were some additions made when the, the entrance drive, Prince Ave got added to the site, we were back for that for you. Or you did that presentation, but we had one minor modification, which was purely last year, which actually showed in this location, a new building that we were proposing, and it shows, showed a water tank that's, that was here. The water tank was here because it had a direct water connection off of New Hall. And the cooling equipment was supposed to be going on the roof of the building. In the meantime, the market group has decided that this building, this, this proposed building will not be built at this time, it'll come a little bit later. And the market group is decided to start with the rehab of the, the main building first. So that's now underway. This is the site plan, as we do, as we submit a true minor modification. As you can see, up front in the parking lot, we, it's minor modification of minor modification when we had to when we had the water tank, they had this reverse, refers to its original situation. The big generator yard is, looks pretty red here, it's just really a modification of relocation of the equipment. That's different. Other modification that we made is that, as you can see in the black line here, the, the road through the generator yard stop, we are in this minor mod. It's coming through here and it's, it connects on this, this driveway, so that the fire department now has, instead of coming around here and kicking the emergency and having to go out, they can just now encompass the whole, the whole building and there's a connection here. You can see the fuel storage, the five fuel storage tanks that we had shown here in, in our plan. We have I guess I can admit that. We have now deleted, the fuel storage is now part of the, the generator equipment, so that, that has been gone. And as, and this is, this is where another one of our, our changes is, it's, it's the water tanks that are being proposed. And I'll zoom in with my. There we go, we zoom in a little bit. You can see here, the change I were making is this appendix that was on the building. We are actually taking, taking off, so we're, this is an existing construction that we're taking down, we'd have a few cooling equipment. A piece of cooling equipment sitting here and I'm proposing two water tanks. One of this one, the, the top one, is supposed to be constructed right now. The other one, we are putting the foundation in and actually we're not certain whether we ever going to be needing that second one. But we're putting the foundation in because once this, this one water tank is up and running, it's, it's extremely hard to then come back in and do the foundation for this, because we can't disrupt the service at any time. So we'll have to, we're almost forced to, to put the the second foundation in because of putting this tank in, in here. As you can see, we are proposing a retaining wall, because this whole area is lower, is a good fifteen feet lower than the surrounding area, Bourne Street and, and the abutters. So that's, that's, and as you zoom in here, as this, this is, this is, this top one, this is the water tank that I'm going to be placing right now, or hoping to be placing right now. All lower, all sort of embraced by this retaining wall that blocks it. A few for a large part, this, as I said, second foundation is just, it's slated to be built at a later time, at which time, what time that is, we, we don't know yet. Further zoom in on, on this, this, because this is the, the, the foundation, the, the tank that's most most worrisome to, to some of the abutters. You can see the water tank here and then our retaining wall that we are, we are hoping to construct. As you can see here, in this light line here, the, the dashes with the axes in it, that's an existing chain link fence that's currently presumed to be on the property. But the survey that was done by the market group shows that the property line actually goes significantly away from that from that fence line. And, and in here, the encroachment of the, the fence is close to seven feet. On, on the street, it's about two feet. So there is this whole sliver of land that actually Markley owns, but it's, it's on the other side of the, the, the chain link fence. As picture tells a thousand words, this is a photograph taken this morning from the Markley property line, showing, showing that, that fence line that we have, it's currently right there, showing the neighbor, neighbors property and the chain link fence and then the construction that's, that's ongoing here, the removal of the in order to place the retaining wall. So this is the photograph, sort of from the flip side that I just showed you, this was one of the photographs that the neighbor had submitted to you as, as documentation. So again, the channeling fence is seven, eight feet onto Markley's property here. So all the material that's in front of this fence, it's really all, even, even part of this vehicle is really on Markley's, Markley Group's property. This is what we actually are, want to be proposing here as we, as we have a sliver of two to about seven feet of area that's on the other side of the fence, we are proposing to find an upright stair as a sort of a screen. A screen that goes both ways, but this is, this is the proposal form from Markley to construct a screen to the, to the proposed hall of tanks. That's my petition, I sort of raced through it. I know you, you all have a very long agenda and I didn't want to take too much time. But I am very happy to entertain any and all questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak from the applicant?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, George. I'm speaking tonight as a consultant. I'm not practicing bar anymore. So I don't want to have any misunderstandings there. That's why Mr. Theodore was started off. I think it's important, and I'm going to ask Theo if he can go back and, and put that prior one that showed the boundary line, because that's obviously one of the, the, yeah, that one there, that's one of the critical things here tonight. I understand, I'm going to try to, I've got twenty pages of notes and talk. And I know the board has always been somewhat hesitant to listen to me because I talk too long sometimes. So I'm going to cut myself down as much as possible for the sake of the board. I think the important thing here is to understand the big picture. And what I mean by the big picture is a hundred years ago, this was the Lowell Bleachery site. It was a manufacturing facility. It was a sweatshop. It blew, it, it just spewed smoke and, and all terrible things around it. And that continued on through the neighborhood until the Bleachery closed in nineteen thirty. And the property was empty till thirty-nine, when Prince bought it. Prince bought it and owned it and ran it for the following almost sixty years. And in that time, this was a bustling industrial complex. Noise from trains and buses and, and not buses, but tractor trailers and all of that stuff. So the neighborhood all had to live through that. If you lived in this neighborhood for the years that the Bleachery was there and for the time that Prince Spaghetti owned it, you, you knew you were next to an industrial, a commercial complex. They left. Wardens wouldn't continue it and they left in nineteen ninety-seven. And from nineteen ninety-seven the property became a hell for the city. It was a hell and the neighbors. It was a hellhole because there was junk all over the place, a junkyard for everybody. It was dilapidated, decayed, drugs, drugs, drugs and prostitution even in the neighborhood, a junkyard for anything. It must have had tens and spores of, of abandoned cars put there that the city had to deal with all the time. This is what the neighborhood was. This is what it was like before the Markley company came in there. They came in, purchased the property and they told you exactly what they wanted to do. They told you the nature of this particular business. It doesn't get any cleaner than this. This stuff is all clean, computer storage and data storage, information stuff. When the Markley company came in, they not only decided what they were going to do with the buildings there and whatever. Principal, importantly, for this neighborhood, they cleaned the whole place up. They cleaned they cleaned the river Meadow Brook that runs through there. I can't tell you the amount of stuff they pulled out of there. They pulled that out and cleaned that up to the delight of the whole conservation commission. They planted over three hundred and twenty-five trees at this site. Just remarkable. And they landscaped the whole site, most of the site. They're in the process of completing. The work that some people seem to be complaining about on the backside of the building now is all laying out the beginning of doing the, the landscape and the foundation and the, and the completion of that work. They're going to beautify that area just like the rest of it. So this is a, this, this is a company that is a classic good neighbor and has done so much for the city. They're so well-known all over the country. We should be proud to have a company like this in the city and do what we can to help them to continue to be there and to expand. Now, I'm aware of the fact that you've gotten complaints from a couple of the abutters to this thing. The abutters say that this is going to be a terrible thing for them to be looking at from their houses. I asked Theo to keep this up here because I want you to see, the heavy line on the bottom is the property line for the Markley company. The dotted line above that is where the fence is. In the pictures, the two of the pictures you received from one of the abutters, you see property against it. I think Mr. Kindersman showed you that. There's even a car there, an abandoned or ancient car or something. All of that stuff, or at least most of the car, is actually on Markley property. So the, when the question came up of what it is they're going to see, to me, you look across the building, at that building that's there now, that's the view these people have right now. That building, to me, this concrete building with no windows is not, is, is just an incredibly depressing almost look. Thank you for putting that up there. I mean, it looks like a penitentiary al- almost. They're, they're going to fix this entire area that you see in the screen. That's what they're in the process of doing. They're going to build a big wall all along there, just like they have in the rest of the place. They need to have this water, they can, they need to have it there. I don't know if George or, or Theo made that plain and clear. That's where the city water source is. They need that to work on this building. This is the building they finally have decided, the old building that they finally going to work on. It's a critical thing. the old building that they finally gonna work on. It's a critical thing. In an effort to try to ameliorate and help the neighbors come out, the Markley people said, listen, if they have a problem with viewing it or whatever, just picture as you could now are the addition of from that picture that you're looking there of what I counted as thirty-five trees. I don't know if that's exactly what the number is, Abaviti. That would be basically a fence, a block of a view of of the whole of most of the operation. They see the top of the tank, they probably would. But they'll still see that building as well. So I I'm asking you, this is is, this isn't a minor modification. It's not, they're moving. These, the 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 towers were originally scheduled for another place. They're moving to this place. They're not in introducing for the first time these towers, these water towers. They're, they need to move them to this part of the property so that they can do something with this building. And as George mentioned, I mean, we should be proud. We have coun- the biggest companies, the biggest banks, the biggest companies in America, all storing their data at this place in Lowell, Massachusetts. And we're willing, as I said, to do what we can to help these people who claim that they uh, this is a terrible view, a terrible sight for them. And it's a very simple project. It's not a harm. I don't see why we can't do this very simply. So I'll stop talking now and I'll be uh around to hear anybody else's uh presentations, complaints or whatever. And I appreciate the board um having us consider this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lighties. Anybody else from the applicant? If not, I'll turn it over to the public.
I don't think so. I think Mr. Kipfer is just there to answer any questions.
Excuse me. Anybody this evening want to speak to the guy who sent us a request for minor modification?
Yes, I would. I'm Eileen Castle. I'm good evening.
Can you give us your address, please, ma'am? Thank you.
Sixty-four Otis Street. I am at the um Markley property. And um, that's my house that you're observing at this point in time, my yard. I'm I'm hoping you've had a chance to read my letter. I have submitted prior to the meeting and did see other photos of mine that weren't looking at this what the clutter that I need to clean up. Um, I'm here to oppose them. And let me start with the following along with Markley's constructions and requests. Since the beginning of Markley buying the Prince's building, I have attended several meetings over the course of the year. I noticed that excavators were removing granite rock walls and soil within five feet of my property. I understand what the gentleman just spoke about. That fence went up probably fifty years ago when Mr. Prince, when Prince Macaroni put it there. It's all along their property. That's where they said the line was and that's where it's been for all my life. I've been there seventy-something years to be exact. My family's been there over a hundred years. So I guess I wanted to speak, uh, read the rest of my thing, but I really would like to speak to what the gentleman did say. Um, my parents bought this house from the Bleachery and they're up there, although Prince had trucks. Those trucks were never in my area. They never came near my area. There was nothing there that they could come near. No tra- the only trains that came were specifically sent at a special, special time. There was nothing that was a problem. As I grew up, I played in that area. So I never saw any cars, any remnants. I was a child there. My children grew up there. They played over there in that yard. Yeah, it was not, it was not a a great place to play. We used to call it the back field. And now it sounds like it was something that it was a dump place. We didn't have prostitutes there. We didn't have anybody else there. We had families. We had a neighborhood. Sacred Heart, Sacred Heart, we used to go sledding there. Sacred Heart people fought for this to get this straightened out years ago with Prince. And now we have to come before the planning board with changes that they should never have made in the first place. So I'm gonna finish my little, I have a paper I'm gonna read you and I'm sorry I have to read it, but I wanted to say what I had to say there. Early in June this year, I noticed excavators were removing granite rock walls and soil within five feet of my property. I reached out to the building inspector. He visited the project site. Upon visit, he reached out to Markley and discovered that Markley did not request any modifications to their original plans, which were parking spaces. Cleaning up the upper level because that's what they promised us from day one. And landscaping was going to be taken care of. That was their plan with the upper level where I live. However, they continued working and made significant changes. I have submitted several photos showing the unauthorized work partially completed at the time of the photo. Since then, Dave returned and submitted a video of the ravaged area. There is no way to beautify the area. Markley submitted a request for a minor modification. Oh, on July, July nineteen, Markley submitted a request for I'm sorry. July twenty twenty, Markley submitted a request for minor modification on July ninth. That is three days later than the submission due date of July sixth, according to the city. The only reason why they submitted it was because I informed the city of what was going on. So this is no minor modification in no way, shape or form. Major is more like it. Markley, since the beginning of coming into Lowell, has promised neighborhood feel with any works that they completed. As a matter of fact, it was a part of the approval process in the beginning, as put forth by this planning board, noted several times in the planning board comments of Markley's project dated back to September of sixteen. This is taken right from the pages of the memorandum. The board approved the site plan with five an application will work with the Department of Planning and Development on a landscape and lighting plan to be approved by the planning board. They did nothing. As an abada, I am upset that Markley is not being held to their word. They have taken down all trees and removed all soil, taking away any landscape that had been there. This is not what anyone in the neighborhood envisioned or the city was approving. The video does not show you the view from my home and what the neighbors will be looking at forever. I would love to invite you to come to my yard to see for yourself what this corporation has done. If this is what they think is working with the neighbors in the planning board, they missed the mark as far as I am concerned. My home is over a hundred years old on a nice corner lot. I has, my family has paid their taxes over the years and I continue to upkeep the property. We in the neighborhood do not need Markley Group putting up water towers and devaluating our home. If the Markley Group needs water towers, they need to find somewhere on their property with the preapproval of the planning board to put them and not ruin the continuing, continuing of the neighbors Lowell, Lowell neighborhood. I hope I have made my point very clear. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak, any guys to this modification? Anybody else? Anybody else want to call in? If not at this time, I'll put it over to board members. May I have any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I guess the big question is, what is Markley gonna do about the differential in the property lines and the fence? Are they gonna reclaim their property or what are they gonna do about that?
I don't think, uh, Mr. Mallard, I I don't think that reclaiming their property is really an issue. Um, they welcome, they want to be the good neighbor. They've obviously shown that through the entire time that they've been there compared to what this castle said, but um, the the answer to to you would be, they intend to build the in a brand new wall, the entire distance uh from there up uh losing the adjacent street um that runs parallel to it. And at that time, they will also build the fence and I'm sure you've seen
One Street.
Pardon me?
One Street.
Thank you, One. Yeah, uh. I I'm sure you've seen the fencing, the new fencing they put up, the beautiful new fencing they put up all around the rest of the property uh practically. Um, they've done everything first class. So the answer is, I would assume that they're going to not so much try to reclaim the property, but with the assistance of the neighbor, put up a fence and trees if they, if they, if they want, that um, that would be alongside that on either side of the fence uh to their satisfaction. I would welcome that as a condition, uh, the approval of this modification.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak to that?
Um, not yet, ma'am. I have to go through the board members first and I'll come back to you, okay? No problem. I have to keep it certain order, okay?
I got it.
No problem. Thank you. I won't forget you, I promise. Anybody else on the board?
Yes, I'm, Chairman, I have just one question.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart.
Clarification of the present uh layout that we have, the these two water towers were located somewhere else on our plan that we approved. And and this change is relocating this corner. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, okay.
The reason being, uh, if I may, Mr. Lockhart, the reason being is I, I think I mentioned before, but I'll just uh be somewhat repetitive. When you, there, what they, they were in in thinking of building another new building uh in front of this building as the, as the next project, uh, that's the dark one in the shade that you see. It was just put there. But they have decided that they would prefer to go into the original Prince Spaghetti building, which I think you've all seen from the, from a prior uh visit of this place. They've cleared out and cleaned out entirely. But in order to do that and to try to air condition a um, building is huge and is uh difficult to deal with, is that they need the water towers. I hope that answers your question. Thank you. All right.
Any other board members? Um, I know some of the board members weren't present back then, but I know um a few of us were. Um, Mr. Fishette, you have anything? I know you were, you were present with us.
Yes, yeah, no one did the, all the site visits uh as well.
Yeah.
And uh, walked through the site when it was uh, it was empty, actually. Um, I actually had been to the site when they were selling the used office furniture out of there as well. Um, but um, I mean, I fully understand from the, the uh this castle's uh point of view in the sense that there were numerous meetings uh before the planning board. And if you're in a butter, and and I've been on the other side of that uh in the neighborhood and a project such of magnitude um, and, you know, extensive meetings, extensive meetings, and it was in the newspaper. And uh, you know, the vote is taken and you go home and uh, as far as you know, there was nothing that was gonna happen in that corner. I can't imagine a person listening doesn't understand that. Uh, so obviously I understand that uh, that um, you know, what I'm looking at here, though, when in driving through that, the back streets and taking a look at that building, to your point, uh, uh, Mr. Lighties, the um uh, there's no question about it, that that's a tough view um, as it sits and it and it has been. Um, the, and and that's why I was looking at that. I'm saying, well, you know, what would the towers do to that view? And and honestly, it might help to break it up so you don't have this massive wall of concrete, but one, one of the things that I'm, I I'm questioning too is, do you, do we know actually how much of the tower is going to be exposed above the retaining wall? We know that.
Well, I think I can only say from maybe what uh Commissioner um Fuller said. Uh, he was guessing, I think, somewhere in the twenty or twenty-five foot range.
I'd I'd like to think the engineer that's on board here that's been giving a presentation for the company could give us an actual number.
Yes, I can absolutely. I was looking at my notes here. Uh, yes, the tanks sit at about elevation, uh, we can actually so the the tank sit at the uh, at about elevation forty-eight. Uh, the neighbor is at about elevation sixty-four. So the wall is about, uh, a great difference is about sixteen feet. Um, and tanks being about thirty-five feet in height. That's about nineteen feet above the, above the wall.
So nineteen to twenty feet above, above the wall.
Right.
Now, the
And 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 that would, just sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
It would still be uh quite a bit lower than the height of the existing uh concrete building.
Well, I understand that, but the concrete building is how many feet away?
Eighty-three.
Um, it's, it's, you know, this, this is the corner of a concrete uh uh building. So, you know, this, this, this will, will block that.
No, no, but I mean, from a distance perspective, I mean, if you're sitting in the backyard, you're gonna have the tank, right? I mean, you could, you could throw rocks off the tank. I'm just, I mean, it's just a different perspective here. Do we know the distance the tank is to the uh, to the uh, to the uh, the
So, so, so um, yeah, the edge of the tank at its closest here is twenty-one feet and twenty
Do, do, are you going to the property line or to the way the fence location is?
Uh, to the property line, to the
So where the fence location is, however that happened over the years, that's actually closer, right? Is that
Right, right. That's, that's, that's the edge of the uh, actually the edge of the foundation and the tank is setting a tad closer in than that. It's about twenty feet.
Twenty feet and it's gonna be protruding up about nineteen to twenty feet. That's pretty significant. So I guess, so my question is from a screening. Now, I'm assuming this isn't anything that's gonna make any noise, right? Because again, we've gone through this. It's a great project and I, you know, I, I, I try not to be the, the, the politician here where I'm trying to tell you, boy, your flowers, Mr. Lighties, how great it is. It's absolutely fantastic and nobody disputes that. Uh, but you know, we did have the generator issue as well. And that was another situation. We had to visit the site. Um, and that wasn't part of the original plan. So again, as I'm looking at this, I'm assuming from the tank perspective, there isn't any noise that comes out of these tanks. And I know it sounds like a, maybe a ridiculous question, but I just wanna understand that as, as water is drawn from the tank, is there any, is there any sound that emanates from these tanks?
Uh, you know, there is, there is no sound emanating from the tank. That's it. They, one of the reasons why we were pretty comfortable in the beginning moving the tanks because we thought it was, although the tanks are significant in size, that's about it. There is no noise visually. They're pretty okay. They're, they're a glass coated, bluish tank. Um, and a- again, it's, it's no noise. So it was almost like, well, this actually screens a little of the activity that will go uh along on the property.
So, so now the goal would be to soften that look because obviously that's, that very close. And I, I just, I can't imagine a single person that I'm looking at in the screen right now would be thrilled to have that ten, twenty feet away from, from their backyard. So my question would be to soften that. Now, I know the other bodies, sometimes they're about eighteen feet in height and and maturity. Now, you're showing them awfully closer together. That's wouldn't do much, that wouldn't do much to screen the uh the view. Now, my other question is, you're showing some mature trees. Are those staying?
Well, these, this, this Well, this, 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 this one might, might not, because it's too close to the fence and, and the wall here. So this one might not, the big ones to the left are staying, yes.
Because, because this helps to screen even the view of the entire building. Obviously, that, that mature tree comes down, that's going to expose more of the, of the building. So I, I guess, I'm looking for some sort of screening that is going to really screen those towers. It is just so close. It really is. It's just a big difference between looking at an unsightly building eighty-three feet away and a nineteen to twenty-four tower twenty feet away. It's just, it is. I mean, it just, he can, I don't know how anybody can dispute that. So I'm just trying to figure out the best way. I don't necessarily think this is going to screen it properly.
No, this, this will, this will not, and I agree with you on that, and this will not screen it day, but screen it as, as years go by, as the arborvitae grows in, you know, we need to get enough room to, to have them grow up. These are about eight footers, so, you know, they're above eye height. So they will start to screen from, from day one. If, if you go down, if you look at the driveway into our property at the moment, where we planted arborvitae a couple years ago at a smaller size, they do a fantastic job screening. So.
So, so can I put my two cents worth in as far as this goes? I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Fischette, but you know what? Let's take a look at even what we're looking at that picture right now. If you're, if you're in the backyard of that property, and there were those trees there, whatever, I think, I'm not even sure how much, if anything, if I was sitting at a table or poolside in the backyard there, how much of that tank I would see. I can't imagine how offensive that would be at that point. Then those trees are going to continue to grow. It's almost to the point where you have to be on the second floor of that building before, of that house, before you're going to see anything of any magnitude. I, I'm, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, what size, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt. I appreciate that, Mr. Lighties. So what, what height arborvitae are you looking to, are you proposing to plant?
Uh, these, these are seven to eight footers. As you can see, I mean, the, the fence here is, you know, is obviously, it's a six-foot channeling fence. So they're, they're just about, just above that. So even if you, if you go to this and, and just, you know, and vision, the arborvitae is just sitting there, almost blocking, blocking your folks, blocking your fence. Uh, almost the whole channeling fence, you can see that the whole bottom part of the, of the big building is gone, so.
Can I, can I say something else, Mr. Fischette? The thought occurs to me, if you look at the, if you look, and I have a million pictures of that. Just the, some of the trees that have been put in, for example, along Markley Way and other parts of the property, these are, they're different kinds of trees, something that's more akin to these trees with the, with the branches that are up higher. So if they, if we could intersperse some of that variety, that may very well solve the problem of, of seeing, of anything being seen.
Right, right, right. It just, again, the, the, I guess the concern is going to be the, the ability for the tree to be healthy based on the, on the area, but I, I would like to see, I mean, I think there's a way that, that, that it can, we can screen this, that will work for everybody. I understand the frustration here. If it can be properly screened, I, I think we can come up with something that will, that will work. I'm just not convinced we, we're quite there right now, but that, that would be my comment for the moment. Thank you.
I, I have a suggestion. I think we need two things here. I think we need a rendition of what these tanks look like relative to the ground level and get a better feel, and then some suggestions as to how to screen. I mean, I think there are small challenges that we could work with besides arborvitae and the type of screening.
I think that would be helpful. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
These tanks don't look like on the ground. We can't get a good feel for that with what we have.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments? If not, I have a couple.
Uh, this member, Chang? Yes. So I, I want to make a point first, is that I, I understand the neighbors, a butter's concern, and, and I understand that the current excavation is not spell out in the previous approved plans. So I would appreciate if the applicant have bring this to the board earlier and not to alarm the neighbors, you know, as we have, we did now. So that's, that's, that's one part I agree with neighbors, that, like, the application, the minor modification have arrived a little late, since you already started to work, basically. So I want to make that note. Secondly, I, I, I do want to ask the engineer whether other locations have been explored, and also what's the possibility of lowering the tanker down into the ground? I mean, that's, that's one way you can, you can make it disappeared. Of course, I understand that that will in, in, you know, incur additional costs, but, but in, in light of the neighbors' concern, that's one way that we can pursue. And so I want to ask that to the engineer.
Yes, I, this, once again, thanks for this question. Couple, couple of reasons why I really want to be here in this situation. First of all, there's a major water line that's coming off of in Sav, and it's running, running through here. It's actually public water line running on private property. That's the way it happened, and it's, and it actually runs all the way off of our property. So we have a major water line running right here that we can tap right in, right into. Second of all, this is where the new cooling equipment is going, which is a just really good spot for, for servicing the building. And ideally, obviously, as it's being what it is, this, the water tank elevation, the bottom of its elevation wants to be at the same elevation as this, just to avoid any pumping and anything that, that could go wrong with that, just to avoid any complication. So the moment we are digging these in, if, if you will, the, these, we need to start pumping, and these will not really work as, as functional anymore. So that's, that's why we arrived at this location. And as I said, just to reiterate, this is the water tank that we want to build at this point in time. This will only be a foundation, and it's, it could be years, it could be never, we, we don't know. But this is just in reserve. This will only be a foundation. Nothing will be, no tank will be built here. This is, this is the one we would, we would really like to construct shortly.
Okay, well, thank you for explanation. I, I, I understand when, if you put in pumping, it will create noise as well, and so that, that won't be ideal. And, but I, I, I also want to point out that, yeah, even though you are building one tank at a time, if we give you the approval, you can build it anytime that the neighbors may not be notified. So, so I want to treat as we would assume both tanks are in the ground as well. And so I, I also see the corner between building one and two, and wonder if that's, you know, in our location, you can build closer.
Yeah, but you, you can see, this, this, this is a large retaining wall. Sorry to interrupt. This is a large retaining wall. This, this is a good twenty feet lower than here. So from a, yes, from a pumping situation, that would not be a good, good place.
Well, I appreciate your explanation, and I, I, I concur with Member Fischette, is that if, if that's the location, then we hope that we will find a screening solution that is adequate for the task. And Chairman, I'll give it back to you. This is all the comments there.
All right. Any other members have any further comments? If not, I want to address a couple.
This is Member Galvin. I just wanted to ask, or ask for it to be reiterated, what is the construction schedule if you were to receive approval? When would the tank be complete, and when would the landscape potentially be complete?
Luke, you want to answer that?
Yes, this is Luke Kipper. I'm a project manager with Markley Group. If we received approval, we would plan on completing the first tank by the end of 2020. You know, depending on the proposed screening solution, we'd obviously like to get that done this year. You know, if it's a little more complex, it might be a, a spring project, but we would, we would like to get this whole corner of the site done in 2020.
So does, so does that mean if the tank was done by the end of the year, the landscape probably wouldn't come until the springtime?
No, that, you know, if it's a, you know, a simple arborvitae solution, there's no reason it couldn't be done by the end of the year. I, I know certain plantings require a certain time of the year for them to achieve the house. So we wouldn't want to put something in that would die, but if it's something that we could do this year, it would certainly go in this year. We've got, looking for other projects next year, so we're, we're not, we don't want to leave loose ends over here for, for next year's work.
Sorry to interrupt again, this is being a landscape architect by trade. We, it's, it's important, it's important, once the, the retaining wall comes in, and that's, that's a sequence of this construction of the, the retaining wall before the construction of the water tank starts. So the moment this retaining wall is in, we could look at the landscape behind the.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then just my final comment is, if we're talking about adding trees to screen these water tanks in addition to the arborvitae that kind of provide that eye level screening, would you consider something that potentially could be year round, because we all know that the trees will be there for a number of months, so I just wanted to add that as a final comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before I take over, I told Christine I'd let her speak first, so go ahead, Christine.
Eileen?
No, Christine, right? Miss Castle, is it?
Eileen, that's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, okay, I'm sorry, Miss Castle, I apologize. So you had a, you had a question after they mentioned about the fence and the dotted line and the trees on both sides? Yeah.
I'm not sure I have a question.
Okay.
I, I still, my property line is still the fence. It was the fence when Prince put it in, and it's remaining the fence. And if I have to go to court, I will go to court. I, I'm, I'm, got to the point where I don't believe anything they tell me, because they've told me everything that they have said and everything that they have done has changed. Every time they want to make a change, and they want to put something in front of somebody else's face. And the city of Lowell and the planning board has agreed to it, and now I'm coming to you and telling you that they're doing it again, and we never seem to get it right. I want to see if we can get it right this time. I want to know. I was told by the architect, Theo, I spoke with him on the property, and he went over to the edge of the property when it was probably fifteen feet from my house, and he looked down and he said to me, oh, no, we're not coming any closer than this. This is where it's going to stay. It will never be that close to your line. I said, the, the line you have right here is about five feet from my property. And he said, oh, no, we're not going to do that. So am I supposed to believe him now? Am I supposed to believe anything that's going on? Every time I go to a meeting, somebody comes up with something new and says, oh, wait, well, we're going to change this. So.
You can believe that the five feet you're talking about, and the property you think you own, because you have a fence there, is not your property. And the sooner you understand that, I, I just, you know, you, you want to try to, and, and look at that picture there. Just because there's a fence there doesn't mean that's the property line.
Are you telling?
What you're seeing is, you're seeing from a survey done by a professional who has shown what the property line is according to the deeds and the, and the registry of deeds. So I don't want to get into that. I am willing to, to, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm willing to make every effort and promote to the client the efforts that should be made to try to screen this to the satisfaction of the butters there. I'm concerned, because I, I think, I, I, I think that if we talk about an eight-foot-high tree that's going to grow, and maybe there's still something on top of it there, well, maybe we have to put different types of trees at certain points along the way. I mean, you know, the seventy-odd years that Mrs. Castle has lived there, she looked at a pretty tough situation, a pretty goddamn cement building, and all of that, and she survived it for the seventy-seven years.
Well, let me address my concerns now. So obviously, for this minor modification, we've been at it for over forty-five minutes. So that kind of tells me, and the fact that two or three of the board members and the applicant said they would like to come in and show us a new type of screening, I would recommend that the applicant come back with the site plan modification with those types of screening. Because I don't think that's going to be accomplished tonight. We've been going around in circles, going around in circles. We don't have the plantings. People are willing to come back with the plantings, but that'd be my recommendation.
Perfectly acceptable, Mr. Chairman. The only, the only difference was that August seventeenth, your next meeting is my fifty-second anniversary and a party, so you won't have to, you won't have to see me.
Okay, so, well, that'll be up to you, to the applicant, when they want to put the modification forward. Obviously, acceptable by myself and the board for time restrictions or what we have scheduled in the future. So you need a vote on the minor, minor modification? Or you just want to withdraw at this time and come back with a, a site plan modification?
Sure, we'll just withdraw at this time and come back.
And you come back with a site plan modification. Okay, so we'll be presented with a new site plan modification. Hopefully, we'll answer a lot more to screening. Hopefully, we can see what the, what the height of the water towers would be. Maybe you can even put some balloons in the area that we've done for aerial views in the past to show us what the height will look like. And that way, we'll have different types of trees that you say may be appropriate, and any alternatives you feel might be for screening. And we can take it from there when we see the new modification. Plus, after the new modification, we will get feedback from the department. I know at the beginning of the meeting, one of the applicants mentioned about how it's easier for the fire department. Well, I think that's an issue that the fire department can answer for us, and we can have weigh-in from other departments. I know we got a letter from Mr. Fuller, and I'd like to hear from other people, so at this time.
Chairman, could I just put clarification?
Sure.
So are you suggesting that it, it's determined that this is not a minor modification in the, after submitting a new site plan?
So what happens is, if he wants to withdraw the minor modification, or we can vote on it either way, but if he withdraws it, then at any point, he could come back in for a site plan modification for full public hearing. Because this isn't advertised as a public hearing.
Right. So is that what you're suggesting for the August meeting?
I'm not saying he'll be on the August meeting.
Okay, so for, we're just suggesting, is they're going to have to post for a, a public hearing? A, a, a modified site plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so if they're willing to withdraw it, if not, then we'll just vote on whether it's a minor modification or not. But I think, excuse me, Mr. Lighties indicated we'll withdraw the request for the modification at this time. Is that correct, Mr. Lighties?
That's true.
Okay.
I, I, I can say I'd like to have it scheduled for August seventeenth, because.
I can't, I can't say we're going to do that tonight. I can't be offended to answer on that. We have to look at the agenda, see what's on, and hopefully, we can finish tonight's agenda, because this is taking us a lot longer than we anticipated. We have four public hearings. I anticipated it going to take longer than this one had.
Could I say one thing? Does that mean that, does that mean that they have to continue the working that they've been doing for the past?
They don't have permission to put those towers there.
Thank you so much.
Nope, they don't have any permission. They don't, they don't have any approval from this board. They have no, they can't put those, if they want to dig the dirt, they can, but they can't put any towers there.
The dirt's all gone.
They have, they have approval to put a tower somewhere else. They want to put it there, they don't have to come back.
And you need to understand that these, these water towers three hundred thousand gallons of water.
Okay.
So there's nothing small about them.
Okay, so we will see a picture of those when they come back. We'll see how big they're going to look, and they can present all that. So at this time, the minor modification has been withdrawn, and we're going to move along on the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along on the agenda, the next matter. Moving along on the agenda, the next matter, oh, I apologize for the delay, is the site plan review with special permit for one thirty-three Walker Street. Uh, J J N Realty Trust applied for special permit, site plan review for a proposal of nine unit residential development at the above address. The existing structure is a two family home on a thirty seven thousand, thirty six square foot lot located in traditional neighborhood multi-family zoning district. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structure, subdivide the lot and construct four townhouses on lot A and four on lot B. The applicant is seeking special permit for lot A and B and for the use of four to six dwellings on a single lot in the site plan review and development for three dwelling units. Uh, this matter has been continued from my last meeting and actually previous matter early in the year. And I know the language has changed a little bit, so I believe the applicant has downloaded from the file the request. And can we hear from the applicant at this time, please, for Walker Street?
Good evening, Chairman Lindenhut, members of the board, Attorney John Cox, three seventy-five Agorum Street, Lowell, Nassau, represent, uh, the applicant, uh, J J N Realty Trust. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, we were before you on June the fifteenth and, um, I think we went over most of this. Uh, if you need me to go over it again if you have to do that. But, um, it seemed to me like there was concerns based upon a May eleventh memo from, um, from the city, which, uh, some of the concerns had not been completely, uh, taken care of as of the June fifteenth meeting. Um, I'm happy to report that, that, uh, I think you'll see in your file a, an email or, I think two emails, one, uh, both dated July the fourteenth. One from the, uh, stormwater team, uh, pertaining to the water issues from both the water department and the stormwater department, um, as well as a memo, um, uh, dated, uh, uh, July fourteenth from the fire department. Um, um, Matt Hammer is also with us this evening. Uh, we, we met with Deputy Bean from the Lowell Fire Department, uh, pertaining to the issues that the fire department had and they outlined those issues uh, on that May eleventh meeting. And I think, um, uh, member Galavan, I think, brought that up at the end of the meeting, uh, last time. Um, so we met with the, with the deputy and we have agreed to, to sprinkle, please sprinkle, uh, both, uh, all the buildings, four buildings. Uh, so clearly that was something that, um, he endorsed and I think he endorsed it in the memo that you have before you in that email. Um, we also agreed that, um, uh, that the snow removal will, um, will be, will be handled privately. Uh, if, of course, you know, not for small storms, but, uh, it can be something certainly in, in your approval as well as in the condo documents that, that pertains to snow removal, uh, being an issue if it cannot be removed off of, off site, we will remove it, um, privately. Um, there'll also be private pickup for trash. I think we talked about that last meeting. Um, and, um, I think, I think those were the issues that were still outstanding from last we met. Um, there, uh, I, I believe that the engineering department has approved the, uh, design of the roof cutters. Um, and again, they had that, that, I guess, falls into the stormwater team. Um, happy to answer any questions you may have. Uh, I do want to, uh, I do want to thank Francesca for all her help. She's very helpful and accessible and, um, I know that, uh, if I was sitting in your place, I'd like to hear uh, good reports from people that, that work, uh, work for the board. So I want to thank Francesca for all her help. Matt is here as well, if you have any technical engineering questions, uh, he's, uh, he's listening in. So, um, we have any questions and, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, get this matter approved.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. Um, anybody this evening like to speak in regards to project on Walker Street? One one three Walker Street? Anybody want to speak on one one three Walker Street? If not at this time, we'll turn it over to, and the board members have any questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have one minor
Sure.
Parking signs of the
Yeah, uh, Mr. Lock, uh, Mr. Lockhart, if I may answer that, uh, by the way, is that the Aiken Street Bridge behind you? I was wondering if that was
Oh, that's the Golden Gate.
They look, they look very similar.
I, I thought it was the John Cox Bridge.
Oh, no, that's not that
Well, that's not quite that grand for sure.
I couldn't tell unless it slid up, Mr. Cox.
That's right, that's right, good point, good point. Um, yes, as far as signage, yeah, we talked to the fire department about that and we will, there'll be signage up there pertaining to, uh, to, uh, emergency vehicles and what have you, you know, whatever is required by, by the fire department.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart.
Uh, Mr. Lockhart, uh, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying. You'll see on the layout sheet, which is sheet four of six, there's going to be some no parking signage, uh, on the right hand side of the drive coming in to each of the lots.
Right.
And there's also that signage that we had discussed related to the limitation of, uh, thirty minute parking for, uh, delivery vehicles and emergency vehicles, uh, and whatnot.
On each of the individual lots.
Any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recuse my, recuse myself from this, um, vote and the following vote on Lincoln Street because I haven't been up to date on the few projects.
Okay, thank you, M- M- Mr. Malovich. Luckily we have some alternate to have been at both those meetings, so we do have plenty of inform, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other board members, questions, comments?
On this member, Chang?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, sir.
Um, the, I, I just want to verify, like, so if, uh, with this building now sprinkled, um, I, are you still putting in a fire hydrant or no, uh, or no longer?
Uh, Matt, you can handle that, I think, Matt?
So the way, uh, you know, we discussed the, uh, the potential of a fire hydrant, um, into the project, which is essentially a blow off valve, uh, for a wa, a main water line that would come into the site. Now it was determined that there'll be an individual two inch line to each individual unit. So there's no need for the blow off valve, which would be utilized in installation of a hydrant.
All right, thank you.
And then also there's a hydrant if you're facing the property to the right, front right corner, there's already a hydrant there as well.
Yep, I see another plane.
Anything else, Caleb?
Uh, no, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just more, uh, at this point, just, uh, just to highlight a few, uh, few items. Is it, uh, this has been quite a, a, a process and, uh, uh, just, just some notable items that, uh, I'd like to touch base on. Uh, did get the, uh, the email from the, obviously we received from the fire department, um, indicating that they were, um, satisfied with the entire building being one hundred percent, uh, coverage with the installing, uh, sprinkler system. And, uh, in the signage as well. And I, and I had, you know, I started to think about the signage and enforcement, but I, and I do know, uh, you know, I went and pulled out the approval in, in the information we see from the fire department and Highland Street. Matt, you were the engineer on that and, uh, you know, the both, the, the buildings were sprinkled and they didn't require any signage. Uh, although there wasn't any intended parking, but the roadway was narrower than what we're looking at here. So, um, and so I'm looking at that, uh, I think as long as they're comfortable with signage. Uh, and the fact is, the true fact is, is that it's, it's being one hundred percent sprinkled is, is I think the, uh, uh, the big issue here. Um, and then also items that have really developed over time, the fencing on, uh, each side for the butters, uh, on each side of the project and the ten foot note buffer in the rear.
Yeah.
Going to be large lots, we meet all the, uh, the usable open space. Uh, you're going to have the snow removed, the parking, uh, we need full requirement. Uh, we talk about neighborhood character and the streetscape, uh, what really is going to face, uh, the Walker Street is going to fit in as far as the look and feel, um, with the units in the rear. Those are large lots, I think, uh, man, what are they, eighteen thousand square, eighteen thousand plus square foot lots?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I just think we covered about everything we could, uh, with, you know, over, over time on this, uh, project. Really the, the technical issues came down to the fire department and the engineering department with the, with the drainage. And I think, I think that's been resolved, so that would be my, uh, my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Shet. Any other board members?
This is member Galavan, um, I just have one final clarification, um, I think it's moved on the document and back off of the document. On the site, on the updated site plans, it says building height P V D and I think the maximum building height allowed is thirty five feet. So I was just curious what the, um, final building height is for these units.
They're going to be less, uh, Matt Hammer, Lamplex, it's going to be less than the thirty five feet. It's probably going to be more around, um, twenty five feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, given none, what's the question of the board?
Mr. Chairman, uh, well, we have two votes, right, for a site plan review and then
In a special permit, yeah.
Special permit. Um, make a motion for a site plan review, uh, to approve the plan with the following conditions, that the, uh, the applicant will sprinkle one hundred percent, um, of the, uh, of the buildings. And the applicant agrees to remove, uh, the snow off site if, uh, uh, it cannot be maintained on site safely. Uh, the, uh, trash will, uh, trash pickup will be private and the applicant, uh, will, um, adhere to the required signage. I think final approval by the, uh, by the fire department in case there's any issue, outstanding issue on the, on the signage. Um, and then, uh, everything else has been incorporated into, uh, into the revised plan. I thank you, Matt, for the windows that we asked for on the side as well. Uh, we had some, uh, we had some, um, um, uh, sides of the, the buildings that didn't have any windows. So I, I appreciate that in the final, uh, uh, iteration. So that would be the motion, Mr. Chairman.
What about, um, the landscaping plan by D P D? Uh, you said
They submitted that, but yeah, that, I think it's always safe to do that final, uh, final approval of the landscaping plan by D P D. And obviously with the caveat, if, uh, if there's an impasse that the applicant would have to come before the board to finalize.
Thank you, Mr. Shet. And Mr. Shet has made a motion for the site plan. Um, do we have a second?
I'll say a motion.
Motion is made and second by Mr. Lockhart. Um, motion is made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes, yes, any opposition? Any opposition, hearing none? So the site plan is approved. So now we need a motion for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the special permit. Lot A and lot B. Um, the same conditions.
With the same conditions that was approved by the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Lockhart to approve the special permit with the same conditions that has just been adopted by the site plan. Do we have a second for the special permit?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion is made and second for the special permit as well. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, yes, any opposition? Hearing none? Um, both motions are approved, Attorney Cox, you got the special permit as well as the site plan and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate, uh, your, uh, your, uh, attention to this, uh, this matter and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review at one seven oh Lincoln Street. Columbia Care Inc. is seeking site plan review approval to expand the existing marijuana cultivation facility at the above address, which is also one fifty six Lincoln Street, one seventy Lincoln Street, seventeen point one Tanner and one fifty nine Tanner Street. The facility is in the general industrial zoning district and the expansion requires site plan review approval under section eleven point four point two. And we hear from the applicant, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kyle Burchard with Goldsmith Preston Ringwall G P R. I'm here with a group of professionals, uh, from Columbia Care. Uh, Ryan West is Vice President of National Infrastructure. Uh, Greg Murphy is the Director of National Construction. Jeff Brunz is the Architectural Coordinator and Structural Engineer for the project. A gentleman who's been, uh, uh, very, uh, closely watching this project, um, as a, as a very interested in Lowell in general, uh, uh, Mr. Bob Marison, um, as well. I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Marison first to speak and then, uh, move on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of planning board. Uh, I'm Bob Marison, I'm with Patriot Care, which is actually, it's a wholly owned subsidiary of Columbia Care. The applicant I've, I've met and I know many of you, uh, I've met many of you over the last few years, uh, on different, several different things that we've come before you on. Um, I apologize for not being able to make the last meeting. Um, unfortunately I had a conflict that I couldn't avoid, but, um, you know, I, I've seen, uh, what the team has put together in response to the, um, uh, comments and feedback that you gave them at the last meeting. And I'm going to leave it to them to really, uh, to go through all those, uh, to the extent you want it, you know, depending on how much detail you want. Uh, I believe that the actions that we, uh, are proposing, um, and the actions that we've actually already taken in some regards, uh, will address the concerns that, uh, and, and, and questions that were raised at the last meeting. Um, before I turn it over to Ryan, uh, who is our VP of Infrastructure for Columbia Care, I just wanted to address one part of it, which is the, uh, questions about, uh, odor, uh, at the facility. You know, we, we built this facility, um, we built out this facility, uh, over five years ago. Uh, we started the construction over five years ago and, um, went through a significant design phase at that time and used technology available to us at that time. And the design of the system was intended and supposed to handle the, uh, you know, everything, uh, you know, all HVAC requirements as well as odor control. And I, you know, I think we heard loud and clear and we could, we could also understand that it, um, we had some issues with that, with, with that. Um, since the last meeting, we've taken significant actions already to deal with that. And, um, knowing several of you, uh, how you operate, I think you've probably already been, you've probably been by the facility in the last, uh, probably in the last week since you got the materials. I've been there, by there a couple of times, I was there as, uh, this morning as well, just to, just to make sure that how this, how it seemed to be operating. And I couldn't, I couldn't detect any odors today when I, I walked the entire length of the building along, uh, Tanner Street. Um, several times today and, and it was a very humid day, everything is kind of close and so on, I, I couldn't detect it. Um, I believe what we have is working. If it turns out that, you know, um, that there is anything still noticeable, you know, we can take additional steps, but we've already taken act, significant actions since the last meeting to deal with what was raised. And, you know, that's kind of in keeping with how we, how we like to operate. I think you've come to know us as being, um, desiring to have a good relationship with our community. We work hard for that. And, um, without taking any more time, since it is getting late, uh, with, with the meeting already, I'll let, I'll turn it over to Ryan West, our VP of Infrastructure, who can describe some of the changes that we've made in the, uh, odor mitigation as well as other, uh, aspects of the plan in more details. So I'm going to myself on mute here for a bit.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, as Bob May has mentioned, my name is Ryan West, I'm the Vice President of Infrastructure for Columbia Care. Uh, since last meeting, uh, we took the comments very seriously and we have since conducted an inspection of the site with our architects and mechanical engineers to detect the sources of the odor and find mitigation, uh, solutions. Um, we need to take a multi-hunged approach. Um, odor mitigation is quite complicated in some respects, especially that the source of the odor is, is extremely strong in, in medical cannabis. Uh, we were able to identify ten e- exhaust locations on the building, uh, of varying degrees of odor intensity. Um, now that being said, we do have existing, uh, carbon filtration on many of the exhausts. However, one or two exhausts over time, uh, have, had the carbon filters missing, which we're able to identify. Um, one of our units, um, was the most significant source of odor, which was an, an E R V, which is a ventilation unit on the roof. Others were kind of the same source, uh, from, from bathrooms, et cetera. Uh, w- once we identified, uh, the, the sources of the odor, uh, we were able to go to, uh, uh, vendors, um, and odor mitigation specialists to advise us on the type of, uh, infrastructure we would need to install. Uh, obviously much more, um, sophisticated technology than, than many years ago. And, um, what we settled on was the, the And, um, what we settled on was the, the multi-approach between, uh, continuing with carbon filters and actually acting active tubing, um, in the form of oxidation devices. Um, in a brief summary, summary of what that is, it's a UV light which shines on the surface which creates oxide. And these oxides are pumped into the airflow of an exhaust and basically neutralizes or destroys, um, not only bacteria and viruses, but also odor and, you know, the molecules. Um, storm situations, um, you know, storage and waste refuse type of, of places where, where odor issues are a, a problem. Um, there's a various type of systems. I've installed them on the exhaust in the ductwork. We have some active units which are actually in the rooms. And it has been a nice day improvement, um, in those air flows of the exhaust. Um, there's also been other areas where we've realized, like doors and openings into the building, vestibules where there's been kind of the odor and kind of pressurization of the building, uh, has been an issue. Now, some of these freestanding units, you can turn them on and pretty much instantaneously the odor disappears. And that's what we're experiencing. So I think, you know, just to summarize, the action we've taken since the last meeting, we've spent sixty thousand dollars worth on this equipment. Uh, we've been monitoring and assisting the site on a daily basis. Uh, we do feel, um, that the building envelope itself, now it's an old building, it's built on CMU blocks. And one of the reasons in this application, we are looking to insulate the building in an EFS is because, you know, this old building isn't a fully sealed envelope. And obviously there could be, uh, sources of, of mild odor emanating from the walls. So, you know, in the end of the day, we need to invest a little capital on this site, uh, which we are willing to do, which is why we have the, uh, this application in. Part of that is the building envelope and sealing that with the dress, all the exhausts on the building already. And the new infrastructure, which is proposed in the expansion, will contain the PCOS, which is the photic catalytic oxidizers, which I've just described, uh, to combat any odor mitigation. Um, and, and we do stand by, you know, to hear your comments and also remediate any other concerns that may be. Um, so with the, the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, Mr. Chair, should we pause for any questions on the odor mitigation? It's not my area of expertise whatsoever. I would move into the site issues, which we've been working with city staff to resolve.
Sure. Why, why don't you move right into that, sir, if you would?
Okay, thank you.
Then we can address everything at the end, but thank you very much.
Very good. Uh, we've provided, uh, updated drawings, uh, to the city and I don't know, Francesca, if I would be able to share my experience, see I have that ability. Uh, just to put forth, uh, this is what the site looks like now. Um, approval that we obtained through the Conservation Commission, uh, added a, a chain link fence that had driven posts along the edge of the river. Uh, limited, uh, erosion controls, given that, uh, the islands that we are proposing to re-green from the existing asphalt would really be falling more towards, uh, the interior of the site to begin with. Uh, there was the addition with the, uh, furthering of the interior mechanical engineering design of a small vestibule here near the loading dock. Uh, working with the stormwater team, we have changed the deep sun put catch basins, uh, to storm scepter units, which will increase the amount of, um, uh, sediment trapping that happens before runoff gets to the river. Uh, we have also proposed to narrow the existing, uh, entrance off of Lincoln Street to the, uh, maximum allow, which is thirty-two feet, which does allow us to get the larger delivery trucks in and out of the facility. Um, so that's accomplished by, uh, installing some, uh, full height granite curving, uh, to close down the existing, uh, entrance, um, and putting in the appropriate ramps and the painting that's necessary in order to, uh, bring this back to a passable condition. And we have also added then a sanitary sewer lateral connection to the existing, uh, lateral that goes into Tanner Street. And, uh, other than that, um, we've simply changed the, um, the curving style that's going around these proposed islands, uh, to be a, a more of a, a header asphalt curb than a Cape Cod berm, being that there's really no need to, you know, be, be getting up on those islands with any, any wheels. So, uh, it's also a narrower, uh, footprint for, for those, uh, that curving, uh, allows more room for parking, uh, when vehicles are making their movements in and out. We had discussed, uh, the Tanner Street walk with, um, the, the city transportation engineer to resolve that, uh, alignment. Um, and, and there's simply just the addition of a, another sheet to the set, which is, uh, due to some additional details that were needed to handle, um, the additional sanitary sewer connection, um, as well as the, the ten, our, our Lincoln Street, uh, entrance connection. Um, so there just was getting a little crowded trying to fit all those details on the sheets themselves. So that, that's the summary of the improvements. I believe that we are, um, in line with the, uh, various city departments. I, I hope so. We would like to be able to close hearing this evening if it's feasible to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I turn it over to the public? Okay, at this point in time, um, I'll turn it over to the public. If anybody want to call in and speak on this project, for the Lincoln Street project, one seventy Lincoln Street? Anybody want to speak on Lincoln Street? Hearing none at this point in time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members who might, haven't may have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding-
Yeah, Mr. Lockhart?
Sorry if I missed the, the, the sidewalk. Build a sidewalk along one hundred and thirty plus, uh, feet, uh, front of, on Tanner Street. You construct, contribute funds towards that. Did you address that?
I, I did mention that walk, uh, discussed with the city transportation engineer and there would be, uh, a, an escrow posted for that. I'm not sure exactly the mechanics of how those monies get posted, but it's a, it'll be a six-foot walk from the face of the curb to the edge of the walk. Uh, except at a couple of pinch points with the existing, uh, infrastructure that's there. Uh, there is a, a utility pole. There's also a catch basin. Um, there's also, uh, future design that the city would need to complete in order to, uh, finish the alignment, uh, proposed by Tanner Street. Um, there's an existing, uh, Tanner Street, uh, alignment that is proposed to connect with Payne Street. It comes to this intersection. I think there are some details to be worked out at the city at this intersection as to exactly how the geometries will, will match up. But the funds will be posted for the construction of this sidewalk, about four hundred linear feet of sidewalk.
Have you provided bicycle storage someplace on the site?
We have, uh, near the front entry, main entry, uh, per entry into the building. Uh, it's very near the handicap spaces. Uh, here's where we have that.
And one last question regarding the size of the- I'll just read this as I made of- memo dated, uh, June eighth. Site plans in the main application provide different, oh, square footage of the building after construction. Forty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-six point two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet respect. Using the height of them, oh, no way. I'm sorry. I'm mistaken. I'm, I'm, I'm- I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members? Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Shet.
First of all, um, I'm, I'm very pleased with the, um, the applicant addressing the, uh, the odor concerns. Uh, the only thing I will comment and whether or not it's because you become so used to it when you work there, you know, so many industries, you rely to self-police yourself. I just can't believe that, um, I can't believe the staff that worked at that facility didn't notice that it was emanating, that the stench was emanating from the building. So that, 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 that's just the comment on that. Um, I just think that perhaps we need to really have a, uh, I think we've approved, uh, these facilities in the past. Uh, just saying that the, you know, the applicant has to comply with the state requirement and that, uh, you know, with the city and, and basically left it open for complaints, but I'm just wondering if, uh, if going forward, there shouldn't be some sort of a, a monitoring program within the city for, for this. Uh, uh, as you've indicated, uh, through the years, uh, um, with expansion or, or, uh, changes and processes. Um, you know, obviously there was some, so again, I wanna, I wanna, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with the, with the progress that was made there. Uh, question on the facade of the building along Tanner Street. And forgive me, I think we, we did touch base on this at the last, uh, meeting, but if you could just go over that again, because I believe you were adding some sort of a texture to the interior part of the building that was going to break that up a little bit, but I'd just like to, uh, go over that, uh, again, please.
Sure, that's fine. It's a, it's a EFS, uh, covering. It's an insulated, uh, covering. And so, uh, on the screen is our, our proposed, uh, way of addressing that. Uh, you know, the, the proper one to speak to this would be Jeff Brunz, who is with the architecture firm, Blueberg. Um, if he's on, he could, he could probably speak to this much better than I could. But the, um, the elevation that faces the road, I believe, is, uh, right down here, partial, um, south elevation. So this would be the pattern and general color scheme of what you would see along Tanner Street. Um, the main entry of the building is here with its, uh, brick covering. And, and then you would have the second half of the, the building that would turn the corner and come down and you would see this coming down Tanner Street. So this is the pattern to break that up. Um, there had been earlier discussion about art on the wall, but it, it seems that maybe it's better suited to have more of a, you know, a broader geometric graphic pattern, um, to break that, that wall surface up.
Now, is that a, is that a, any change in texture or is that just, uh, painted?
Uh, no, it's, it's a change in texture. The material is, uh, it's an isolating, uh, sheet material. And then that, so that's much different than the painted block that's there currently. And so that's a, it's got a, you know, a somewhat of a coarse texture to it. Uh, it has the appearance of a, of a stucco, um, and that is definitely gonna change up the, the texture of that wall.
Yeah, no, I think that would be a lot more pleasing than what you're looking at right now. Um, but, um, and then the, uh, I understand conservation approved the project. Is that correct? The, uh, the, the plan?
That's right.
So they were, they were okay with the drainage, um, because I know there was an issue with the last, the, the last meeting, yeah.
That's correct. That was an issue, um, with the, with the board at the last meeting. The Conservation Commission was, was satisfied with having just deep sun hooded catch basins at the catch points of the rear parking lot. Um, the stormwater team ha- had us in further discussions to see what more could be done. Um, given that, you know, that this is, uh, discharged directly to the brook. Um, the request, the, the suggestion came through as a, as a storm tech, uh, or a, uh, a, let's see, what do we call those? The, the, the storm tech units, um, storm scepter, pardon me. So the storm scepter units were sized, uh, it's actually, it's the smallest size will get us to, uh, eighty percent total suspended solids removal. So, you know, this is, this improves things. The Conservation Commission was happy with that. Um, and the stormwater team saw the benefit. They saw the limitations that this unique site has, um, and didn't, uh, insist on additional groundwater recharge because of those unique limitations, but said, you know, if we could just remove some, some additional pollutants from the water, that would, that would be a good thing, would be the right thing to do on this site.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that covers the concerns we had at the prior meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shet. Any other board members have any question?
I have none.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, this member, Tang?
Yes.
Um, I appreciate the, all the, all the work you've put into the revised plan so far. Uh, uh, one, one air, um, question I have is, um, uh, while appreciating the, the, um, that you're gonna contribute to the sidewalk and also the facade, which will, uh, certainly improve the Tanner Street, um, side of the, of the property. Uh, what is the planting plans or if there are any plants like, uh, planted along the sidewalk here? Or, or maybe, it could be grass, but I just want to, uh, verify that.
It, it would only be grass. Apparently that's what's proposed at that look, uh, along that face of the building. Um, we have the two autumn blaze, uh, maples that are proposed in the parking lot islands to be done. Um, grass in the other islands and, and, and simply grass all along Tanner Street.
Okay, um, noted, uh, on the, I, I, I just didn't see the grass like being specified in the plan, but I, but, um, but that's okay. And, uh, also, um, I concur with, uh, Member Burchett's concern about, like, uh, odor. And, uh, I think the positive note is that, um, the improvement can, can be made quickly. And, um, you know, the, all the, all the concerns being able to address very quickly as you, um, you have shown. So I would also, uh, support in support of a monetary plan, not only for, for this project, but for the other projects to come, that, that has to be objective and, and, like, unperiodically. Because, uh, I think partly, uh, uh, things, uh, have, have a lifespan. Probably the carbon filter, as you said, some are missing and, and maybe due to weather or wind. So, uh, I, I think periodically that ought to be addressed. And also, uh, with improving technology, um, I, I, I think, um, maybe three to five years timeframe is, is a, uh, reasonable, uh, reasonable requirement for, for the, uh, the similar projects, uh, going forward. So, uh, uh, that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Caleb. Any other board members? Uh, I just want to comment on, um, again, the odor. I know, uh, uh, it was a concern of mine last time. I was there this morning and I did not smell it, or I did smell it previously as soon as I pulled in the parking lot. And I did go around the bu- building thoroughly today on the exterior of it, all down Tanner Street. Um, and I'm being a hot day when I was there this morning. I could not smell any odor, which I was very happy to hear about. And I'm glad you corrected that. Um, that's a big improvement. Uh, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, I know we brought it to your attention. I know I came out pretty strong on it last time. So I knew you knew where I was coming from on that and I'm glad it was something that you could rectify, which I was hopeful that you could. Um, I see with all the new plans coming forward and I figured there had to be some engineering solution that could be put in place. And I'm just glad you addressed that, um, because it was a concern and, um, um, and yeah, the, the other matters I thought were mitigating factors that you could address no problem. Um, I know we touched about, you know, Tanner Street and the facade there and, and, uh, the other matters. But, um, my main concern was the odor. I mean, it's, I, the others I thought could be rectified pretty simple and I'm glad that worked out. So I appreciate that very much. I agreed, reading your, yeah, yeah, randomly on how you fixed it and where you had your high density of where the odor was escaping and how you fixed it. It's good to see that things like that can be rectified. I mean, again, I appreciate that very much. Yeah, I said color chart you to show us before, when you went by, we showed you right there. Yeah. But that was showing you where you were getting this odors from.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I had a little to do with it, but.
Yeah, I, I looked over pretty good right now, but not, yeah, on screen, but yeah. I mean, it was good to be able to go in, be able to, I mean, before you can fix anything, obviously you have to locate it, fix it, treat it. Yeah. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other board members have any further questions? Francesca, any questions for other from staff? Or did we miss anything?
Um, nothing for me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a question here. And maybe I missed it. Has a figure been determined by either the engineer department regarding the sidewalk? Francesca, I guess that would be question for you. Have you?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Is, is the, either the city's engineering department or has it been a determination how much the escrow would have to be for the sidewalk? Have we determined that at this point?
I'm not sure. I don't believe so.
I don't think, this is Natasha Vance, the transportation engineer. I don't think that we've determined a dollar amount yet.
All right, thank you.
Natasha, is that something difficult to come up with? It's just a period of time and look at how long the budget, how it is and what obstacles the city might have is.
Yeah, it, it, no, it shouldn't be very hard to come up with that dollar amount. I mean, it's, I, I think the generally for like a four foot sidewalk, it's fifty to sixty dollars a linear foot.
Okay.
This is a six foot wide sidewalk, so I think we could come up with a number pretty easily.
Okay. And I know usually the applicant had a question about how it goes in escrow. I know a lot of times we have any questions, we just refer that to the law department and they can draw something up, but obviously the applicant can look at as well with their, with their attorneys as well. Any further questions from the board or? I know Jerry, that's something we don't have a, definitely, it sounds like we could, we could get to and Ms. Vance gave us some indication what it could be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming the applicant's agreeable anyways to just make it a condition that they would escrow whatever the amount is.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it would, you know, as part of this, I really would like to put, and I think we need to have internally probably some discussions, but the applicant, and I just, I throw this back to the applicant here is, is for the applicant to provide a, a periodic review and report, the BPD regarding current odor mitigation. This is just more to be proactive rather than getting complaints from neighbors. I don't even know what the timeframe is on that. It should probably be something in existence for the perpetuity of building, you know, and well, the buildings in existence. And that should be, I think, with all of these units. Now, I don't know the appropriateness of the timeframe. I don't help put out a timeframe of three to five years. I guess that would be, you know, the, the technology that's available and, and perhaps just even some modifications that are made to a building, but perhaps that can be worked out with BPD and I think we probably have to standardize something going forward. The applicant be agreeable with something like that? I just, you might help them to write a book on something like that for us.
Uh, yes, I think that would be remarkable. That can be, you know, certainly we'll work with BPD to come up with those timeframes for appropriate. It, you know, would probably be somewhere between ninety days and six months to assess that would seem reasonable.
Okay.
Can I just, is, is it okay if I just suggest something to consider, especially if you're going to use this potentially for others as well as that? You know, I don't know what the timeframe is that you'll feel, whatever it is, you know, we'll do obviously, but it would be nice to think that if you, if, if after, you know, some number of, of the, of time periods, let's say it's, you know, let's say you said it was a year. So after some number of years, if there hasn't been an issue, is there a way to sunset, have a sunset on it so that it's just not into perpetuity either? Because
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know, if you're, if it's working and we know that it's working, then it's, it's, you know, it's an added cost to, you know, there is cost involved with doing that every time. And so we're happy to do whatever he wants to do, obviously, but I think it would be fair to have some kind of sunset if there've never been an issue.
I, I would agree with that. Again, it's just, I, I'll be honest with you. It, it's something that and, and the chairman knows, I talked about, I know people that live around there and they've complained about it for years. And and honestly, until I had a reason to drive up there and, and have it come through my air conditioning on my vehicle and step out and smell it more in preparation for the meeting and then discussing with the chairman, I, I, I just, you know, I'm just surprised that it would have gotten to that point without self policing. So I just would like to have something, something in place moving forward and ask you to work with BPD. I just think it, it's not just your facility, you know, it's unique. You're one of the first ones that went in without having the, the city did not have the zoning in place. And, you know, so obviously that was a unique situation.
This member Chang, can I, can I add a note? So I, I, I concur with Member for Shet that DPD is probably a good guide to, to develop a timeframe, but regarding sun, sunset provision, like I'll think that like the monitoring is better to be done like at certain timeframe, like I, I, as I, as I said, that seems like a system deteriorate over a lifetime and, and that, you know, like if we monitoring right now is going to be okay, I think for, for at least one year, I, I, I would think. And but, but the problem comes is when after, like you have seen this time and in with weather, it would degrade over time. So, so I'll, I will think that like monitoring the long term and, and not as frequently, but like such as what you guys did is you, you have someone come in and you give it, you give it, make, do a study and you have a chart that have like its color and that's a very straightforward way. And, and I would think the cost will be limited too, given that like if, if you only deal with this every once in a while. So, so that's also a thought. I think BPD can figure that out.
I'll just point out that in the odor report, they did include that they would include it in their monthly or quarterly preventative maintenance plan. So they would at least be addressing it quarterly as they assess the HPAE that they would address this to. So I just wanted to point that out, that it was in their, in their report.
That's correct. This is Ryan West again. The preventive maintenance is replacing carbon filters and every year it's changing the UV bulb in the, in the photocatalystic oxidizer. So that's kind of the timeline for those, that those elements which need to be maintained. I do think a, an annual inspection, like an internal review makes a lot of sense. You know, I think we can be self governed as well on that. Certainly, I think showing our commitment to this as well. That's kind of realistic timeline, that timeline you're outlining there, if that makes more sense.
Yeah, I, I, I see this as more like a car, like regular car maintenance kind of thing, right? You go certain mileage and you new kind of check everything. Well, if you only go a like very small distance, then, then you only change like the light bulbs.
That's, that's correct. And also as well, you know, I, I think odor, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be leaking from an exhaust. I mean, it can be from the building envelope and as such, we are upgrading our envelope for our building. But when you're looking at other facilities as well, I mean, these are sometimes things you have to look at because anywhere there's air able to get in and out the building, that's where you have the potential for odor. So as I say, we have to, you have to take a multi-pronged approach because that one technology doesn't fit all, all sorts of odor, so to speak.
Well, thank you. I hope, I hope this, I, I see that there are different technologies involved here and I hope this multi-pronged, I would say preemptive approach will, 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 will be the way to go. Oh, giving back to you, Member for Shet.
Well, thank you, thank you, Caleb. I think I'm fine with the extent of my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any comments? I've, I've not further. I made my comments early, the odor thing, and I thought everything else was, was in place. So
Well, so.
Yeah, so we just need one vote on this. This is just a regular site plan. Doesn't mean quite a special permit or it, but it's just a site plan. So what's the request on the board for the site plan for Lincoln Street?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. That the applicant hosts an escrow, the amount to be determined by the city of Lowell for the sidewalks proposed in the site plan and along Tanner Street as discussed. And also that the applicant will work with BPD on developing a odor mitigation monitoring program that addresses aging systems associated with odor mitigation.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I second. Motion second, all of them have a say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes, yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We wish you well.
Um, excuse me. Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so moving along, our next matter is a site plan review and a special permit twelve oh one Westwood Street. Full Harvest Moons Inc. is seeking a site plan review and a special permit approval to open a recreational marijuana dispensary at the above address. The property is in the office park zoning district and the use requires site plan review approval under section eleven point four point two of section eight and a special permit approval under section twelve point four. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, one thirty-three Market Street. Here appearing for the applicant, Full Harvest Moons. Also with me tonight will be Joseph Gianino, who is a government, our government relations expert. You will hear from our project architect, John Caveney, who will speak as to the layout and build out of the property. You will also hear from Chief Mike Allen, the former retired chief of police from the town of Rochester, New Hampshire. Our site engineer, Matt Hammer. Ken Cram of Bayside Engineering is our traffic engineer who will speak. And the two principals of the company, Michaela Ristuccia is the CEO and Janet Cooper's, who is the president, will be speaking as necessary and answer any question. Now, I don't want to go into and belabor the point about the procedural history of this, but as you know, the city of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the city of Lowell have approved the retail dispensaries of cannabis. So as a result, they enacted the zoning ordinance that would allow for a special permit and a site plan review for the retail dispensaries. The city went through an exhaustive zoning study of the city and determined certain areas in which this would be applicable. Where this retail dispensaries would be permissible within the city's master plan and would comply with zoning. This area that we have scouted out and sought out at twelve oh one Westwood Street was one of those sites where the city heavily vetted the site and studied the site. In June of two thousand and eighteen, we put our, our notice in for a letter of intent with the city. We described our team. We were interviewed by the, by the manager's office in their department. And again, the site was reviewed and selected and investigated and fully vetted for over two years. And we, Full Harvest Moons was unique in their application in that the petitioner is a majority all female organization and they demonstrated the sufficient expertise and capital to fund the operation and run the operation. So as a result, in December of two thousand and twenty, they were select and they were selected and given the opportunity to negotiate a host community agreement, which was done. A copy of those is, is, is attached with our material. And the important, relevant portions of the host community agreement, as you know, are that three percent of the gross revenues will be contributed back into the city. Also, the commitment to hiring from the city eighteen to twenty employees. Also, the commitment to go ahead and to support community organizations. And to support training and to support education and to support education and the knowledge of cannabis and the applications. And this was all done. And we entered into the host community agreement with the city and to show you or to demonstrate that this group is, is fully vetted and capable of running a first rate organization here, a first rate retail dispensary. With the materials, we received notification on Friday afternoon of July seventeen that the Cannabis Control Commission approved the application. It was deemed complete by the commission. And they must satisfy requirements pertaining to background checks, fingerprinting of individuals. And also, more importantly, what we're doing here tonight is the approval through the local process. So they have been vetted through the state system and sought their approval. And here we are going through our site plan review and special permit. I wanted to take an opportunity just to go over the answers that we gave. To, there were some questions with respect to the narrative which we provided information. You will see how the floor plan has a gross floor area of four thousand thirty feet. There are, we had to take over the entire space of that first floor. For security reasons, we could not have another tenant on the first floor. We have also rented the basement more, more room than we actually need here. Because we have not putting that into use, but to take that out of commission. We have provided with you the, the, the specific spaces that we will be using to run the operation and it comes out to twenty-three hundred square feet. That's significant because what it is, is it, that will apply towards how the traffic counts are calculated. We also provided some clarification with respect to parking. The site plan provides that there are fifty-one total spaces available. Now, there's a dance studio there in the basement that lease expires in February two thousand and twenty-one. They will be gone from the premises. There are also two other tenants on the second floor that Trinity Ambulance will occupy the majority of the second floor and Kevin, the law office of Kevin Broderick will, will occupy a substantially smaller space on the second floor. There are two other tenants, work opportunities and acorn tax, who are tenants at will, who will be leaving by the end of the year. So we will, in fact, Harvest Moons will occupy the entire first floor. The basement will be unoccupied and mothballed and that will be not put into use. The second floor would be Trinity Ambulance, the majority and in part, the law office of Kevin Broderick. The fifty-one parking spaces that are there, fifteen of those are committed by lease to Trinity Ambulance. Six spaces right now are leased. That lease will expire by the end of the year and Full Harvest Moons has a commitment to rent those spaces after the first of the year. That will provide thirty-six spaces for Full Harvest Moon. And I will go back to And I will go back to, uh, the per the dispensary requirements, and what is required per zoning, uh, would be, uh, 500 square feet of the existing 4,030 square feet for nine spaces, so that we have more than enough spaces than are required. Uh, there's a clarification that we'll have seven to 10 full-time employees at any one time on the site, but we'll have a total higher to 15 to 20 employees. No removal, we will be completely responsible for no removal on the site, including, including any, any of the walkways surrounding the site. The, uh, question with respect to deliveries, uh, they will be made by a Ford Transit vehicle for product and by an armored car service for cash. Now, as you see on the site plan, when Matt Hammer gets into the site plan, there's an area marked "no parking," which is adjacent to the walkway entrance to the front of the building. That area there, perhaps we could, with permission of the landlord, remark that area for the parking of the loading vehicles that will go through the front of the building. Now, uh, uh, Chief Mike Allen will go through and describe the security measures and how, how and why that is done. There was a question about stormwater. Uh, now, we understand that when we're going through this process here, uh, that if there was another retail facility in this area, uh, that was, uh, in, in the, uh, office park, such as a restaurant, such as, uh, Starbucks, such as a Chipotle, that they would be able to be permitted as a matter of right under Article 12 of our zoning order. Uh, but we are required to go through the special permit process and site plan review, uh, and that is part of going through the site plan review. Safety, uh, public safety, pedestrian safety, and the site improvements are an important element of that. And in discussions with the, uh, DPD, who had some questions with respect to stormwater, that this site was pre-existing before, um, the consent decree went through, where now we are required to place our stormwater on the site, not contribute it to the city system. So what we have done is, and Matt Hammer will go over that with you, is we have provided, uh, and we have provided a, uh, a, a stormwater collection system on the site to make improvements to the site. Furthermore, there are also questions with respect to improvements on the site, on the rear of Carl Street, uh, there are no sidewalks there, that we will make improvements or make contributions to the city for sidewalks on Carl Street. Furthermore, it was brought to our attention by, uh, the, uh, city traffic engineer that the intersection of technology, uh, way and wet drive and Westwood Street, uh, that it could use restriping and also some cautionary signs over there, and again, we're willing to make improvements to that area for pedestrian safety, uh, either by taking the action ourselves or making a cash contribution. Uh, these are the elements that we're looking to do to, to improve the site. Uh, so, uh, to improve the site as part of the requirements of the site plan review. Also, uh, as part of this process here, uh, we have to satisfy the requirements of the special permit and the special permit criteria. Uh, we look to the social or economic community needs to be served by the proposal, and they're significant. And you'll hear from Mr. Joe Giannino in a bit about contributions that can be, will be made, and how they're quantified and contributions to the city. Uh, the special permit, if it's issued, would add to the economic objectives of the city's comprehensive, uh, master plan, uh, by adding additional revenue, uh, to the city, by, and adding employment to the city, these are all real contributions. We believe that our traffic flow and safety, our parking and loading, satisfy the site plan review requirements and the criteria. Uh, Mr. Cram will go through the traffic, uh, the loading and deliveries will be going, uh, addressed by Mike Allen, and I have also, uh, gone ahead and, and described the parking, which, uh, we believe satisfies, more than satisfies the criteria. There's an adequacy of utilities and other public services, we have an existing building that we're working with. Uh, there are public services and utilities on the site. Uh, neighborhood character, we do not believe that the, the, the approval of this special permit would in any way diminish from the neighborhood character. Now, you'll hear that we are going to be devaluing property in the area. Uh, this is a commercial area, primarily a retail commercial area, and we're going to be existing in a, uh, resident, uh, in a, in a, in an office building. Uh, while there are extremely large residential apartment buildings in the area, there are no single-family homes, uh, there are no, uh, uh, neighborhoods that we would be, uh, impacting whatsoever, ever. Uh, given that the use of the property is for retail dispensary, we do not see how it can have any negative impact on the neighborhood, nor on the environment. We are not going to be cultivating anything there, manufacturing anything there. Everything that is brought into this facility is brought in, in a sealed container, and this will also be described to you further. Every product that's brought in there is in a sealed container, and nothing is opened on the site. Um, we do not see any impact on services from the city. Uh, as a matter of fact, we will be contributing to the taxes and the revenue of the city. We believe that this project will, is significant, that it contributes to the goals of the master plan, to have a healthy and sustainable local economy, to attract new business to the city by targeting growing industry sectors that align with the greater Lowell region's workforce, competitive advantage, and resources. This is a whole new economy that is, that is developing, one that was approved by the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the city. We believe that it's going to match workforce needs, provide placement opportunity to the city's residents. All these are goals of Harvest Moons, all these are goals of the city's master plan, and that we will be contributing to each one of those. And by approving this facility, this board will be contributing as well. Again, we do not feel that there's any impact with the neighborhood character. It will serve the economic needs of the neighborhood by diversifying the business landscape in the city and diversifying the business landscape in this area. This is a unique economic opportunity for this state to take advantage of. And we believe that with the expertise of this team in this area, we are putting ourselves in a unique position to accomplish that goal. Uh, there will be no environmental issues that are associated here. We, as I said, are not manufacturing or cultivating, everything comes in a sealed container, and we are taking measures to contain the stormwater runoff, uh, as you will see in our site plan. Traffic access and safety, we'll discuss that with Mr. Cram, uh, but we believe that, that we will, uh, comply and that we will be able to provide adequate safety and traffic for our customers. We don't see any impact on public services or utilities, uh, and that we just would restate that the citizens of Lowell have voted to approve the sale of adult, uh, retail sales of marijuana, they implemented the zoning change in this area for that specific purpose. This area, 1201 Westwood Street, is ideal for this facility. It's accessible from the highway, more ample parking, it's not next to any sensitive issues, not next to a residential neighborhood, uh, and the security and safety measures are important considerations for this location, and it will promote, uh, by way of a robust plan for development in the city. We have a security plan that was vetted by the police department and Deputy Glover, you have that within your materials. You have, uh, in the comments from the city, uh, the solid waste and recycling, approve the plan on June 22nd. The Lowell Fire Department approved the plan on July 9th, and of course, the Lowell Police Department approved the security plan on June 22nd. Uh, my client is committed to working with the city to achieve the objectives, uh, that we have outlined, and we believe that we satisfy the criteria for a special permit. And, uh, again, uh, you will hear from, on the bottom, will be objecting to this, uh, placement of this retail dispensary, uh, at this location. We are right next door to their principal office of Princeton Properties. They make a recommendation that there are other suitable places on Middle 6th Street. Um, I don't know how they would recommend us moving to Middle 6th Street, they have one of their residential properties, uh, Princeton Imperial Gardens is located at 1832 Middle 6th Street. Uh, I don't see that they would necessarily welcome us if we went to Middle 6th Street. Um, before I turn this over, I would just want to, uh, make one final comment in that there was, the charter school on Middle Str- 6th Street was permitted about six years ago, that the same arguments that are being made here are being made there, and that school is there, operating, thriving right now, making contributions to this city, uh, uh, educating the children of this city, supplementing the, uh, city public school system. And, uh, and I might add that if this is approved at this site, we will be looking back at the economic contributions that this, this dispensary will provide to the city with revenue and jobs, and the city moving into a new area, a new era of a new economy. So with that being said right now, uh, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Joe Giannino. Thank you.
Thank you, George, and, um, and to the members of, uh, this, uh, of this committee, I want to say thank you very much. The hour is obviously relatively late, um, your patience is pretty extraordinary. Um, I'll do my very best to, to be brief, um, as a, as a former, uh, as a former city councilor in Revere, Massachusetts, uh, for quite some time in my life, um, it seems like a lifetime ago, I can appreciate the, uh, these long meetings, and I can also appreciate the fact that, um, you really do want to hear sort of the, um, the nuts and bolts of, of, of the things that genuinely do matter. It's the impact on the community, it's the draw on services, um, it's the, the safeguards that are built into it, both from your perspective, uh, from the city's perspective, and then generally speaking, um, to whom the entity of the organization of business coming into your community answers. Um, and, and generally speaking, uh, there's a, there's a whole financial context to things as well. And so, um, I, I'd like to first start by saying it's important to acknowledge that what we're asking you for is not a perpetual license. Um, it's basically a, a five-year license to operate that is, um, that is reviewable and revocable if we do not adhere to and perform, um, things that we have actually promised to you. Um, and so I think that's particularly important to, to recognize, because these types of safeguards that exist in the cannabis industry in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts don't exist in a cadre of other businesses, a cadre of other entities that can come before you. Dunkin' Donuts can turn a 99-year lease, and in the first, you know, seven years of that, uh, we're all the business, and, um, the next thing you know, in some way, that's a vacant building for, uh, you know, for the next 92 years, just because that lease is still in effect. And so there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of safeguards that are built into this, um, to ensure that not only the city, which has, uh, a complete control over a variety of scenarios, including but not limited to fiscal, um, analyses and, uh, and auditing, but also at the state level. So with that being said, what exactly does, um, what exactly does, uh, bringing adult-use cannabis facility like Harvest Moons into this particular area, into the city of Lowell mean? Um, I think it's, it's kind of, uh, with the, the, the whole issue of financial uncertainty, fiscal uncertainty in, uh, in the country and in the Commonwealth, we're looking at about a $6 billion deficit. Um, in Massachusetts, and the federal government doesn't in any way, shape, or form backfill that, um, both municipalities and, um, and, uh, states in the country, and obviously, uh, Massachusetts is going to be dealing with some really, really big deficits. And so we provide some fiscal relief, notwithstanding any of those things. Um, on an annual basis, we're talking about 3% of annual, uh, of gross annual sales that is included in the host. And let's just say for the sake of the conversation, that the store generates $10 million in year one, that's $300,000. Could be more, could be less, um, generally speaking, but it's pretty obvious that it'll be probably more when you start to look at the numbers of sales of marijuana over the course of the last several months, even during this pandemic. Um, the one thing that seemingly did not, um, uh, diminish in a great capacity is the sale of it in legal, um, in legal entities in the Commonwealth, and so we're talking about $300,000, which equates to about six teachers , um, in the city of Lowell, and when 2,000 teachers over the course of the last several months in this state were laid off, that really does, um, make a big difference, and that's not just a one-time contribution, that's an annual basis. So to offset some of the, it's that financial, uh, contribution, but of course, it's obviously, um, not all about the money. Um, in, in the country today, we're talking about Massachusetts having the singular largest numbers of unemployment, uh, in the country, and some are, uh, above 17.2%, 17.4%, and yet, um, where businesses are, are peeling off employees, um, in record numbers in the Commonwealth, we're actually looking to hire, um, 15 to 20 full-time jobs, which, um, uh, that doesn't even stop there, just anyone. We've, uh, fully committed to hiring local people. Um, and so bringing folks into the community, bringing folks from the community into our store as employees on a career path really is, uh, something that we're committed to and something that, um, is, is seemingly sort of, uh, uh, it's headed in a different direction over the course of a variety of, of, of different industries. Um, what we're also bringing is education, we're bringing in alternative, um, holistic, non-psychoactive in many capacities, because people know what they know, and they don't know what they know about, about marijuana, so the education context is particularly important. So when someone who comes into our facility, um, and, and Janet, um, is just an extraordinary wealth of, of knowledge, she's very passionate about the, uh, the medicinal benefits of it, and not everybody who, um, who wishes to, uh, participate in the medicinal program in Massachusetts, um, will actually do so for a variety of reasons. So having a second option to actually receive, um, basically holistic medication, um, in a variety of instances that isn't psychoactive, sobs, and tinctures, and a variety of things that address and mitigate pain and inflammation, um, with none of the effects that we would presume that marijuana has on, on folks, um, in the typical way, is, is particularly important, particularly where the opiate crisis is so prevalent in, in the Commonwealth and in the country. Um, that notwithstanding, we also are committed to, with not only hiring our local folks, um, in the city of Lowell, as many as we possibly can, um, we'd love to have 100% of our employees, uh, from Lowell there, but that's always, not always possible. Um, but we talk about charitable contributions, and as a former local official, and Janet, um, and, and Michellea, and our team sort of analyzing the needs of the several entities that we've found, you know, that we've, we've approached, um, and that she's seeking to operate, we're, we're allowed three licenses, we realized that it's not always a one-size-fits-all, so us walking into the city of Lowell and saying, geez, you know, we want to, we want to give some money to this particular charity, or to that particular charity, might not always be consistent with what the needs, the wants, or the priorities of the community is, and so rather than us identify specific charities or specific contributions, we thought as, we would take our employees, we live in the city, and as a team-building exercise at the outset, we would have them all come together and have a brainstorming session where they would identify a particular charity on a, you know, a, a bi-monthly or a bi-annual basis, that, that the team would actually participate in, and, and that Harvest Moons would actually support. And so integrating ourselves into the community, we think is particularly important, because it does dispel some perceptions that these are just people who want to sell marijuana into our community, they're actually people who live here and who work here, um, and, and whose livelihoods are really dependent upon this business thriving. So, you know, there's a, there's a, there are a lot of sort of unknowns that are- So, you know, there's a there's a there are a lot of sort of unknowns that are associated with and and sort of fears that are associated with it as well. And I think that Chief Allen will do a pretty darn good job of of explaining how it is that provide, you know, safe environments for our patrons. But the experience that that people have generally, when we when we talk to them, we find that people just want a really good experience where they actually have the opportunity to ask questions from a knowledgeable staff, a professional staff, where they actually feel as though the surrounding our facility is 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 safe, it's upscale, it's not sort of seedy or dingy, it's well lit. All of those things that experience really does go into, really does go into what it is that that we want to present in a front facing way to the community. And so this is not going to be the Walmart of weed. This is not going to be in any way, shape or form, sort of a no dark dingy, you know, basement. This is going to be a really high quality, no pun intended, facility that that is is nicely appointed and has really, really lovely finishes. And and finally, I think it's important to note that when we talk about the the opportunity for for our our product to fall into the hands of children, it would be really wonderful if all products that were required to be consumed by people only, you know, twenty one or over were were held to the same standards that that we are. We're really, we're really happy that that's the case because we do want to make sure that that responsible individuals are not only consuming our product, but responsible individuals who know about our products are actually conveying that information, dissemination of information back and forth from the time someone walks into the door in our facility until the time that they walk out is is particularly important. And that's going to be a hallmark of Harvest Moon's. And the final perception that I want to just address and certainly will be open to to a variety of questions that I'm sure you have is the time, the length, the duration of time that someone spends in our facility. We're talking about because of the pre ordering, because of the variety of different technological advances, including ordering in line, texting, and things of that nature, we're finding that the the average ticket time from the moment that someone walks into the facility until the time they leave, it's somewhere, you know, somewhere below eight minutes. And we're hoping that's even going to lower, that's going to even be lower. And so the perception that there are going to be long lines and lingering people and things of that nature over the course of a long period of time. And we've done our best to mitigate because we've learned from other communities problems early on when adult use marijuana was first was first allowed in Massachusetts in the western part of the state. So we've had some time to to refine and some time to address some of those some of those deficiencies. Come up with not only a Plan A, but a Plan B and a Plan C in the event that we do find lines that is limited to an expanded area in the vestibule that John Cave, your architect, talked about. That would accommodate a variety of a lot, a lot of folks, a lot more people than would normally be allowed to stand outside so that we can pull those lines. And so with that, I want to say again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm going to hit mute, which I'm sure you'll be happy about, and I'll be available for any questions that you wish to ask me directly or to participate in at your convenience.
Hi, everyone. My name is John Cave with CAC Architects, based in Lowell. What I'm going to try to do right now is share my screen. So we can show you a fly through video we created with Harvest Moon's team to give you guys an idea of what the what this place is going to look like. Can everyone see the screen there?
Yes.
So this is this is the property at twelve oh one Westford Street. As George said, we're taking the whole first floor, which is around four thousand square feet. We worked hard with the Harvest Moon's team here to really make sure this was an accurate representation of what they're going to build. We're doing this right now in April with them as well. So we're maintaining the same entrance and exit point that's currently on the site from a security and operational flow. Here's the big waiting area that Joe was talking about. It's about four hundred thirty four square feet. So can fit quite a few people. The whole intent is that no one's waiting outside, and this is where you would check in at that reception table and then walk into the actual dispensary floor here. Now, what you're seeing is the public facing side of the dispensary, all the back of houses behind these point of sales in the back there. But really, we we worked hard with the Full Harvest Moon's team to create a warm, inviting, contemporary space with natural woods throughout and really I just want to reiterate too that this we worked hard. So this is becomes an accurate representation of what you're actually going to see there. And as Joe pointed out, we're really trying to make this a high quality space in here. And as we discussed, a separate exit as well, maintaining the same access and exit points from an operational security flow. So there's no mixing of as people going in and out of the facility. So there we have that right there. And then I'm going to switch over to the floor plan. Can everyone see that right here? I want to reiterate what George said regarding, I guess, the square footage uses of this space. What you'll see right here is the entrance over here, this large expanded waiting area here. Reception counter right there, and then you walk into around a fourteen fifty square foot dispensary floor. So plan self is the public facing components here, and then the exit on the right hand side here. The backup house, we blacked out for security reasons in terms of their exact uses, but you get an idea of the overall floor plan. I want to reiterate what George mentioned regarding, although we are taking the whole first floor here, four thousand thirty square, leastable square feet. A for this intended use, the actual square footage required is much less than that, but based on the building that we have here and from an operational and security perspective, it was imperative that we take took the whole floor. Number one, for an operation, from an operational standpoint, having the separate entrance and exit on opposite sides of the building was very crucial for both operations and security. And then also from a parking perspective, taking the whole floor just allowed more parking for Full Harvest Moon. So there we have that. And then what we also created too, and I think the chief will talk this more a little bit, how you flow through how you flow through the dispensary and the different access points and levels of security. But we created a, I guess, a queuing plan that gives an idea of how people would, customers would queue in this space. And it gives you an idea of how many people we would have on the floor. Right now, as we're showing it, we have about a little over thirty people queuing in the waiting area and then sixty eight queuing on the dispensary floor. We also created a obviously this depends, well, no one knows what's going to happen in the future and it depends where everything ends up, but call it a social distancing plan, taking into COVID regulations, making sure we're six feet apart. So obviously, you have much less, much reduced people on the floor and in the entry area. But we just wanted to show this that we were thinking through that. That's really all I have. And I think I'll turn it over to Chief Allen right now for that.
Thanks, John. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I I have a lot of material to cover, but I'll try to, again, as George mentioned, be brief. Can everyone hear me and see me? I just want to make sure I'm doing this right.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So as as George had mentioned, my background's in law enforcement. I spent thirty years as a as a police officer. My last five is police chief in Rochester, New Hampshire. And since retiring at the end of two thousand sixteen, I have since been working as a consultant in the cannabis industry for the last three and a half years, working for multiple clients in both Massachusetts and New Hampshire and have been involved in the security planning process and policy development process for many different cannabis dispensaries, cultivators, et cetera, throughout the Commonwealth. So first of all, before I get into the the actual major pieces of the security plan, I want I want the board to know that when I look, when we develop security plans for these facilities, me in particular, I really look at the the security of a facility through the lens of a police chief, not not as a consultant. I always look for what, having worked in local government, I I really look at what are the what are going to be the major concerns, what are the what are the issues that local government is going to want to see? What are the issues that a local police department are going to want to see? So those are the things that that I look for to incorporate into a plan. And when these plans are developed, they're developed in close partnership with the local police department. So one of the things I did very early on, when we when we began to pursue this project in Lowell was meet personally with the superintendent at the time and have since developed the the latest iteration of the security plan with the deputy superintendent Barry Colner. So I want I want the board to know that this is not a cookie cutter process, developing a security plan for a facility. It is a unique process that is tailored to the specific facility itself. And I just want to say that that deputy superintendent Colner was great to work with. And I know you all should have a a copy of the letter that he drafted from his office that indicates his review of the plans. And I just, I just would like, it's a brief letter, but I would like to read it for the record, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
But it it indicates that the applicant Full Harvest Moon submitted a security plan to Lowell Police Department on June eighth, two thousand twenty, that indicates the site is designed to provide convenient, safe and secure access and egress for clients and employees arriving to and leaving from the site using all modes of transportation, including drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists and public transportation users. He mentions me in the letter as being the direct onsite security person to as the point of contact and indicates the security plan has been reviewed by the Lowell Police Department. We do not see any concerns at this time. However, final approval of the plan shall be granted by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission prior to operation. So that's the that's the the gist of the letter. I just wanted to point that out for the record that that is an important part of this process and obviously has gone through a very stringent review process. And when you talk about this, one other thing I wanted to mention in addition is part of the security plan that I submitted to the deputy superintendent, I also submitted about thirteen separate policies and procedures that have some relation to our security plan that that he also had the opportunity to review, as well as the transportation impact study that was done by our traffic consultant. So those were all documents that were submitted as part of the security plan and reviewed by the police department. So getting into kind of a general overview of the security plan and interest time, I'm going to just kind of highlight the different categories. And and then obviously, if there are any questions, specific questions related to it, I'm happy to answer those. But one of the one of the the first bullet point I have is onsite security personnel. So so they'll always be unarmed, uniformed onsite security personnel onsite during all hours of operation. In addition to that, we're planning to have Lowell Police Detail Officers when we first open and for as long as necessary, again, the discretion of the city and the police department to ensure that we have the adequate number of security coverage, both inside and outside the facility. We are going to have positive identification through electronic identification scanners. That's in addition to the physical visual inspection of someone's valid form of identification that that's accepted by the Cannabis Control Commission. So that's kind of an important, that's that is an important aspect of our anti diversion measures because we obviously do not want anyone that is under the age of twenty one entering our facility. So someone will be at the, if you take a look at the floor plan here, the entrance to the facility, we will have a security officer manned at that entrance that will be checking IDs coming in to our facility. Once they enter into that vestibule, that's where they'll check in at the reception desk. At that reception desk is this electronic ID verification scanner that I mentioned. That that will further corroborate that the person is presenting a valid form of ID and that they're of age and that they might not have been altered in any way. Sorry, my screen went blank for a minute. So once that, once that process is done and the the person is is now ready to enter onto the dispensary floor, in order to get onto the dispensary floor, they have to be buzzed in through an electronic release of that door that goes from the vestibule into the actual dispensary floor area. They'll get queued up in a in the in the the line will have stanchions that will designate the pathway through that dispensary floor that will also be supplemented by those display cases that you see. And that that'll be the the flow through the dispensary floor area. Once they get to the front of the line, then they'll they'll go up to the POS station, they'll make their purchase. And prior to making their purchase, their identification will be again verified for third time by the sales agent that is at the POS station. Once they make their purchase, then they exit through the right side of the building, which if you if you notice on the diagram, this, we've installed what we call an exit vestibule as well. The reason for that is because, again, another anti diversion measure where if someone were to come in that exit door that was out of age and somehow gain access through that first door, they would not be seen, they would be not be able to get through that second door and and would essentially be stuck in that exit vestibule. And we would, we would, we have security staff that will be monitoring video cameras that cover essentially every square inch of the interior of that facility. So they would be noticed immediately and we would be able to take the necessary actions to make sure that person doesn't enter our facility. So that's the flow through the facility. And so the next, the next thing I wanted to talk about is the security measures within the facility itself. So we have video surveillance cameras are a very important aspect of the security operation in these facilities. It's one of the biggest things that the Cannabis Control Commission focuses on when they come up and do their inspections. And like, as I said, every square inch of that interior of the facility, with the exception of the bathrooms, is is covered by videos, closed circuit, video surveillance system. That system is a very state of the art system. It has analytics capabilities so that we can, we can detect certain things within the software if we so chose. We can detect things like distinguish between people, between animals, between weapon, if someone had a weapon in their hand, why is that important? Because those are things that if if we if we ever were to have an unfortunate incident in the facility, we can do we can do searches of of our our video surveillance footage by looking for those types of things. So that's important to the police department. That's important to our security measures. In addition to video surveillance, we have panic alarms throughout the facility located at strategic points, both at the front of house and the back of the house. We have alarm systems in the in the facility so that any all all doors have door contacts, the exterior points of the facility. We have we have motion detectors in the facility. It is a very It is a very sophisticated security system that um is, 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 is really second to none. As far as transportation goes, I know George mentioned that a little earlier and walked through that a little bit. But um just to give you a little more detail on how that occurs, uh the, the transportation of product would come in, in the, in the, in the form of a, of a transportation vehicle that, that is uh very similar to uh the size of a Ford Transit um for product delivery and for cash transports, uh depending upon the vendor that we use. But uh the vendor we use has to be an armored car, a transport service, cash. So um those are the two types of vehicles that we, we'd be um, we'd be using at the site. They would park um as close to the front entrance as possible. They would be making deliveries and transports during daylight hours to provide the most visibility. Um they uh, in the, in the, in terms of the, the, the reason for the entrance that, you know, when we again um develop these security plans, we use industry, security industry best practices. Part of those best practices is using a concept uh which you may all be familiar with already called SEPTED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. I've been using this for many, many years in my law enforcement career. I am a certified instructor through the National Crime Prevention Council. So very familiar with the concepts. All those concepts have been incorporated into not only the design of, in the, in the, in the layout of the facility, but also the security measures that, that have been put in place. Uh anti diversion is uh, is another thing I wanted to talk about. I know it's important um to everyone in the community. And, and, and I already mentioned some of those anti diversion measures. But in addition to that, uh training is an important aspect of that. So every employee has to go through what, what the Cannabis Control Commission has set uh set for training standards for all agents, and that is the Responsible Bender Training Program. There are many different things that are covered in that particular program. But a, a big one is anti diversion measures, you know, how to detect um someone uh, so, uh someone using a fake, a fake ID. So we'll provide, we'll provide that training. Um we'll also um maintain uh rigorous standards when it comes to um the sale of the product and the limitations that one, that one has on the purchasing of product at our facility. So the way it stands now is you're very, you're, you're limited to a certain quantity per day by regulation. Uh we, that, that electronic ID verification system that I mentioned is our way of ensuring that someone does not come back to our facility the same day and make an additional purchase beyond what the regulations allow for. So, so that system can tell us whether that identification that was scanned in has been scanned in previously that day. So that, it's an additional safety measure that we can, that we can use in addition to having the real time ability to look at our video. And I, and I failed to mention her uh earlier when I was talking about real time surveillance of video footage. The Lowell Police Department will have the capability of connecting into our video surveillance system um at any given time in real time. Not only will they have that from their, from their police department, but we can install a, an app on every police officer's phone so that they can access our video system uh in real time if they were ever having to respond, call for service at that location. Like that, why is that important? For obvious reasons. You know, when you talk about the safety and security of that site, and I've heard this many times at other, in other communities, when I've done these presentations is, there's, there's a, there is a perception that having a cannabis facility in your community actually diminishes the security and safety of the community. That is completely false from my perspective. And, and I say that because when you think about the security measures that we are installing, not just inside the facility, but on the exterior of that facility, we have real time video surveillance of, of the entire surrounding property. The parking areas, the entrance and egress points, the interior, the, but also we have uh situational awareness beyond the, the, the property lines. Again, that, that, that can be of tremendous value to a police department uh when they're doing investigations that, that may um where video surveillance is an important component. Uh they'll have access to our systems for that, so they can view not only real time video, but also recorded video uh on our system. And we're required to record and, and store video, uh video at a minimum of ninety days. So um I know I talked a lot, um but, but those are important points that I wanted to cover. Um and, and, and I, I didn't finish the delivery, uh but the delivery would comes in an unmarked vehicle. Uh there's two, always two agents that, that make deliveries. They'll, they'll come into the front entrance, like I said, during, during daylight hours. Uh they're checked in, they, they deliver the product. Uh there's always someone with the vehicle uh whenever there's product in the vehicle. And um the vehicles are equipped with, with a number of different security features as well that um, that, that the wholesale distributor that we purchase our product from is required to have on those vehicles by regulation. So I'll end it there, um happy to answer any additional questions that the board may have. And I will turn it over now to, I'm not sure who's next on the agenda. I believe it's uh Ken Cram, is it?
It's gonna be um myself, Matt Hammer with Lam.
Okay, alright Matt.
Thank you. I'm gonna share a screen of this. So the site um located at uh twelve oh one uh Westford Street has a fifty by one hundred uh foot footprint with a front entrance area facing Westford Street. Property is approximately uh an acre in size. The primary curb cut here off of Westford Street as well as two curb cuts off of Carl Street to access the main parking area. Also an additional access uh off of Carl Street to access these seven parking spaces as well as an area to the parking spaces, which um currently has a dumpster and a loading area there. It's this area in here, which is all this green area is all uh has mature vegetation on it with a variation of trees, grass area. Currently a um a sign located here. And this most storage areas adjacent to parking areas. As attorney uh Theodoro mentioned, uh we're incorporating uh some along the uh perimeter of the parking area here and through the uh surface drainage coming off parking lot, which was terminating in this grass area here, that was running through this grass area here as well. Um the site also um has uh roof drains on the existing building, which terminate uh some surface uh into the ground. And the site now has uh parking, which currently the, if you take the total uh square footage of the building, uh would need to accommodate twenty-one parking spaces. It would be required the first floor and um thirteen spaces are the second floor. And the site currently has fifty-one parking zones. And then I can uh do the uh traffic engineer, Mr. Kenneth.
This is uh Joe Janino. I just wanted to ask before we um, uh before we get into the next phase, I, I obviously uh this is, this is the, the planning boards meeting as well. We might wanna to see if anybody has any questions. Um I do want to acknowledge the, the, the time and the need for them to ask some questions of us. Is that appropriate at this time?
We'll get the questions at the end, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, we're all still awake. Uh my name is Ken Cram, I'm with Base Site Engineering. Uh and we've been brought in uh to help permit this uh facility. Um I've done uh several of these uh throughout northeastern Massachusetts. Um and um uh the NITJ Engineering did the original traffic study and then an updated traffic study. Um they did the traffic study according to Mass DOT requirements. Uh they did a seven year planning horizon. Uh they went out and did counts. Uh these counts have been done for about a year and a half now. They were done in February of two thousand nineteen. Um but they are less than two years old, so they are still usable. And they projected them upward to twenty twenty to get a baseline condition. Um and they uh, uh then grew those numbers further out to twenty twenty-seven, the seven year planning horizon. Um one thing I'd like to, if I can get the control of the screen, is that possible?
Sure.
Yes, hold on. Alright, you should be able to now.
Okay. Select the I can't find the if, I can't get the uh drawing up, but I'll go ahead without it.
Um I think Matt might need to stop sharing a screen before you can share your screen if you're trying to share something different.
Alright, yeah, it still says viewing that, there we go. There we go. What we have here is a graphic of the uh metropolitan area surrounding the city of Lowell. And this shows that generally the area, uh with the exception of probably two in Pepperell and the one down in Air, um there will be in the future, uh within the next two years, uh fourteen dispensaries within this general area. Um so uh you had heard earlier in the evening that there was, when the first dispensary opened, you know, the whole world flocked to it and there was all kinds of traffic congestion and issues. Um as more and more of these dispensaries open, people are gonna have more choices of where to go uh to buy their product. And um I like to think of it uh back in the days, if you remember when Super Stop and Shop first opened there, first super supermarket, um it was, everyone went crazy to go to it. But then over time, as more opened up, the, the demand for each individual one sort of leveled out. And that's what we expect to happen here. Um so we looked at uh what would the dispensary generate for traffic trips. Um and keep in mind, a trip is one vehicle in and one vehicle out. Um and so we're gonna have about twenty-three hundred square feet of retail area devoted to the dispensary for the sale of the product. Um and it's gonna generate on a daily basis about five hundred and eighty-two trips. Um it's a little less than what was in the traffic study because the traffic study had a slightly higher number, but it has since been refined as we know. And during the peak periods of traffic, uh we can expect anywhere from forty-eight to sixty-nine during the weekday. Um I won't say the morning peak hour because we're not open during the morning peak hour. Uh we're, we will only have uh employee trips coming to the facility during the morning peak hour. Um and then in the afternoon, uh we're projecting fifty trips, uh twenty-five cars in, twenty-five cars out uh on an average basis. Uh there would be a little bit more on Saturday during the Saturday midday peak hour, forty-two cars coming in and forty-two cars coming out. And what the traffic study did was it distributed those trips over the roadway network uh which looked at uh half a dozen intersections in the immediate area. Western Street and Technology Drive, Carl Street and Technology Drive, Westford Street and Carl Street, uh Westford and Wood Street, and then two other driveways uh on Westford Street, Drum Pilatos driveway and Highline Motorsports driveway. Um and uh basically what we saw was the uh, the, the traffic generated by our dispensary will be generally split over the three driveways. Uh some traffic going out to Carl Street, some traffic will go out to Westford Street. Um and which helps us with traffic flow and circulation. Uh the one thing uh that we noticed when we reviewed the traffic study, um they didn't talk about public transportation. Uh the LRTA operates a, a number of bus routes and two of them, bus routes five and seventeen traverse this study area. Um so there is a potential, although no credit was taken for it, that uh some uh customers uh will use public transportation to get to the site. Or even the possibility exists that uh some of the employees may use public transportation to get to the site, uh which would further reduce, you know, the traffic impacts as well as it would further reduce um uh customer impacts as well. Uh so uh with the analysis was done appropriately. Uh and it showed minor increases on all the uh intersections. And um it's understood uh prior to the pandemic, you know, Westford Street does carry a substantial amount of volume. Um but you know, our traffic uh if it leaves out through Westford Street, uh they may have to experience some little bit of delay, uh but not a significant amount of delay. Uh we evaluate intersections based on what that calculated delay is. But we also look at what we call the volume to capacity ratio. Uh how much traffic um is generated and how much capacity that particular movement has. And generally for an unsignaled location, if you have a volume to capacity ratio that is significantly lower than one, then it tells the traffic engineer that there is um adequate capacity to handle the movement, but they may experience some delays. So uh but one of the things that was, was discussed um and brought up as part of the, the city's traffic engineer review, Natasha Vance, uh a number of items which uh have briefly been touched on uh tonight, which the applicant is willing to do, um is at the intersection of Westford and Technology Drive, uh you know, redo the crosswalk marking and striping which is faded um and install some MUTCD compliant signs. And uh the uh, we talked about the sidewalk, adding a sidewalk to Carl Street. Uh one of the comments was also about, you know, whether or not the current sidewalk and pedestrian ramps on the Westford Street side is ADA compliant. Um and we will check that and if it's not compliant, uh bring it up to complacency. Um so I think um that uh addressed us all the comments uh from the city. Um and uh I'd be glad to answer any questions um when we get into that phase of the operation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Anybody else want for the applicant to be heard?
Mister Chairman George Theodore, uh I believe we've uh the every member of the the team for the applicant. As uh have has spoken, uh so I I leave it up to the chairman uh to uh.
At this point, alright, at this point in time, I will turn it over to the public. Uh, if anybody would like to to speak in regards to this project. They may.
Uh, Mister Chairman, it's Jeff Brown from Princeton Properties. If I could have a minute, my alarm is going off in my building, so.
Take your time, sir.
Shut that off and I'll be right back.
Alright, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I've had that happen before. Well, uh Mister Chairman, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm with Princeton Properties. Um, I submitted a letter to the planning board. Princeton Properties has approximately a thousand apartments. Within the direct area of this building. So to us, there are significant impacts caused by this um development. I would say that a great part of Princeton Property is, you know, we do a lot of development ourselves, so frequently. Theodore see where we're presenting a new development in a new city. I certainly understand what impacts are. And be effective, and they can affect others in things of nature, so. I'm not new to uh being in front of planning boards and understanding what impact is. So I guess I'd like to start by saying. You know, Princeton isn't taking this position, objecting to this, opposing this project because. There'll be a marijuana just uh retail marijuana dispensary near. Several of our apartment communities as well as directly adjacent to our corporate office. I mean, we're not that naive about it. It is George had mentioned, growing industry, we recognize that. So that's not why we're here tonight, that we think having a marijuana um dispensary. Will be impactful to our several communities surrounding this. It really has to do primarily with two things. Parking issue and the traffic impacts. And um. I reviewed all the materials submitted to the board, so I based my analysis off of that. Uh, some of those figures have changed, and so I'm just gonna make my comments generally. Uh, the application for the special permit or site plan review, I'm not quite sure. Has this project at one thousand four hundred and fifty one square feet. So obviously, the parking is based upon that. Netch's uh traffic review is based upon that and everything is based on that. Now we're here, it might be twenty three hundred square feet. Now I'm hearing tonight that it's four thousand square feet, so. It seems to be a great deal of inconsistency in the in the application itself. I'd just like to note that for the record. Also, nothing on the record addresses the issue. Auto control, as you just went through extensively with the uh with the other development, so. That administratively are things that we see as problematic, and at least giving an honest assessment to the applicant. So as I mentioned, the first item of concern to us is parking. Um. The parking, as you read the application and the various reports, they're all over, all over the place. Uh, with fifty one spaces and there are fifty numbers that they claim need to be uh that they need. But they also admit in the reports, there's fifty one spaces, fifteen of them are set aside for Trinity. Six are set aside for uh Mister Broderick and his law firm. And they're saying they have ten employees working every single shift. So that's, that's uh. Leaves twenty spaces available for customers. But so that's legitimately what they have. They they claim they have all the other, these other spaces, but when you just run the numbers, that's not true. And so if you read their their reports, one report says during peak hours in the afternoon, they need twenty two spaces. Another report says in the one of their narratives, need twenty three spaces. The traffic reports say during peak hours, they will have forty two vehicle trips into the into the property. And on the weekends, fifty one vehicle trips into the property. So I just don't see how the parking works. Now, it is based upon, I think, uh in the narrative, it says it's based upon an assumption that they would um, the customers would be in the building for fifteen minutes. So obviously, if that deviates, they stay longer, the queuing for parking becomes greater. But why are we concerned? Well, we're the adjacent property owner, and that's where our parking is. Both next to the property, completely adjacent, and in back of the building, we have a second parking lot. Whole parking is gonna go into our lots. Directly across the street from this facility is our Carlton Street, Carl Street property, apartment complex with parking there. So to the extent parking isn't completely captured on site, and it's not accounted for based on the numbers that they provided. It's going into our parking lot. That impacts us. And I don't know what more to say about it, other than in their narratives and the traffic reports, these are the figures that they give. And so they just don't add up. You know, when you count for the fifteen spaces that they're setting aside for Trinity, six spaces they're setting aside for Kevin Broderick. And they recognize and they have ten employees, just run the numbers. They have twenty spaces left. That does not accommodate. The number of customers that they claim they're gonna have. Plus, nowhere in any report that I that I have read. Does it say what they expect their. Customer counts to be, their daily customer counts to be. Um, so I just, I don't know where all the parking is going, and so we raise, we raise this in opposition. Um, I was somewhat alarmed to, while I know Mister Cram from having done many projects, I know he's peer reviewed. Many of our project assets Judith Net. Um. In in the niche report, they say that this project will generate seven hundred thirteen vehicle trips per day. So I can only assume that means there's gonna be seven hundred and thirteen customers in and out of this facility per day. Uh, it's not, it's not listed anywhere else that I could, that I could see. So again, it feeds back into where are these people gonna park? In the, in in my opinion, uh the numbers just don't add, don't add up. And then obviously, the most critical points to us are the traffic impacts. As I sit here in my office right now, I can look down on the Westford Street, Wood Street intersection. It's probably above five, seven hundred feet from my office building. And so when I sit here every day at four o'clock, the vehicles queue up to this building, come on an auto. And at times up to this actual width of being this facility. So I think Mister Cram uh mentioned that there would be little impacts. Uh, little delays on the traffic, yet I can sit here and see it every single, every single day. And they claim they're going to add seven hundred and thirteen vehicles to that traffic analysis. Uh, during the peak hours, um there's well over a hundred vehicles being added. Uh, there are vehicles being added to Carl Street as as well. If anyone has been out here and seen Carl Street. And claims that it is two-way traffic, they haven't been on Carl Street, or they were there for six minutes at one o'clock in the afternoon. It is not two-way traffic. Commercial businesses on both sides of the street, park on the street, I come down that street every single morning to work. If a truck is coming by, you have to pull over into the side, the abutment of the road to let that truck come. Go by any big vehicle of any size. I think the only thing I've ever seen pass are two mini boos. So the idea that somehow. Carl Street is gonna accommodate, I think the figure is a hundred and eighty eight vehicles, additional vehicles than what it's handling right now. It just, it just boggles the mind. Doesn't, it doesn't make logical sense. And that directly impacts the apartment properties that we have on Carl Street, directly impacts. Our office off of Carl Street and off of Westford Street, in which we. Uh, not only do we uh occupy this office, offices, our corporate headquarters, we lease the property out to other commercial users. We have Ray Ansus and his accounting group here, which rent the uh second floor. So congestion in parking. Is a critic, congestion in traffic is a critical issue. Unaccounted for parking is a critical issue to us. And the last thing I'll mention, because I know it's growing late, and as I do a couple of meetings like this a week, no one likes late meetings. If if you look at the traffic analysis, and they have a a queuing schedule, I think they call it build capacity analysis. You just look at that schedule. At the Westford Street, Wood Street intersection, at peak hours, they are adding. A hundred and forty four seconds of delay for every single vehicle. That's additional delay. At that intersection that already backs up five hundred feet past its intersection and past our building. Similar um backups coming into Wood Street, forty four point six seconds, forty seconds. Um, on Technology Drive, adding another thirty seconds of delay. So these are the type of impacts that have concern to us. Here is that not only do the impacts affect our corporate office. Our apartment properties here on Carl Street, but adjacent properties, when that back, graphic backs up at the West. Street intersection and farther down Wood Street and um um Princeton Street. Princeton Boulevard, this impacts every single one of our developments, so the more you congest that traffic intersection, that's problematic. And the other item that is notable in the traffic report is. When you recognize the conditions on Carl's, on Carl Street. You also recognize that in this traffic analysis, they are saying delay to get out of their building. During a peak hour and exit onto Westford Street is forty nine point six seconds. That's for every single vehicle, fifty seconds or a minute. But every vehicle's delaying for a minute. That queues vehicles up in the parking lot, further exacerbating the parking problem. It also creates another problem. Back out the other way, go up Carl Street, which is already. Barely passable, and this minimally passable road is now gonna become more congested. They're gonna go up to Tech Drive. Where you already have a recognized forty second delay caused by impacts and make that even worse. So these are the types of impacts and the types of third um items that concern us. Did submit a traffic report by Jeff Dirk from Vanessa Associates, so I know Ken and many of you know is a probably noted uh. Traffic engineer and used by many, many developers and in many towns and cities as peer review consultant. Jeff spells out these problems precisely, so. I don't wanna belabor the point because I I know that it's late, but those are our concerns. The final thing that I would add that I just find um egregious. Is in the presentation, it makes the analysis that in order to. With the standards that um, you know, the character of the neighborhood cannot be impacted. That's one of your standards for special permit criteria. So the explanation for that is because it's not affecting single-family residents, it's not a thing. That's the only thing that counts as a neighborhood. Our thousand apartments don't count as enabled. Analysis and that they're not impacted. That's a statement. That's the position of the applicant. That we're not impacted because we're not considered enabled. And it's just, just illogical. And with all due respect to the applicant and their their very, very expert team that is greatly respected. I I think they've done a wonderful job, but they haven't addressed these issues thoroughly. And the application is incomplete and inconsistent. Think the meeting should be continued until these consistencies can be um addressed and wrapped up. I don't understand the issue of each company, Judith Netch's group, making the traffic report and making these analysis. There's some critical to these impacts, and with all due respect to Ken, he comes in and said, well, I have a new firm. Now I'm gonna make a different analysis. I'm gonna lower the traffic count from seven thirty one, I believe he said five eighty three. From where? I don't know. I don't, I don't know, I don't know where Ken has submitted. Application or an analysis to this board that I've ever seen. Now it's late, I don't wanna belabor the point. We believe that there are significant impacts to our communities. Uh, we believe uh that this isn't, when we said this wasn't an appropriate site, it was because of the traffic impacts. He said in the letter, Middle Street, Sex Street, not because we didn't want it near our apartment. Certainly, we have apartments on Middle Secretary. Didn't have the same traffic impacts this property will have. It's simple as that. The impacts are significant, it should be recognized. You know, the um Bull Moons has an operation in April. And from the literature I've read. They control traffic impacts through appointment only services. That certainly could be considered here. It's certainly gonna reduce the traffic impacts. If you're only having one customer on a set amount of time, I believe it was every twelve minutes in April. And that's how they, that's how they addressed this issue in April, and that's what I would ask the board to consider. And I'll answer any questions and I thank the chairman and the board for wanting their patience, because I know it's so late to the opportunity to speak, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We appreciate your input. Does anybody else like to speak in regards to this project?
Yeah, um, my name is Erin Bradley. I live at thirty nine Carl Street, which is the Carlton Place Apartments across the street. And um Jeff took a lot of the comments that I had. I have lived in this apartment for six plus years. It is my home, and I was um actually pretty offended by what the lawyer said, that this isn't a residential community. It's not a neighborhood. It definitely is. There's our complex, there's the complex next door. And another gentleman spoke about wanting to integrate into the community, yet they just said we're not a community. We are a community. This is our home. You live here for six years, and you know that Carl Street, like Jeff said, is awful. Not only is the road in terrible condition. But there are spaces where you can't fit two cars next to each other. There's not enough room for any additional traffic, let alone the numbers that I've heard this evening. Um, I would recommend, if the board members haven't already, to go out and sit on the street for a little while during high traffic areas. Um, or high traffic times. It's, it's not just a matter of how many cars are coming, but it's where they're passing. If the ambulance is on the street. It's the city buses that come up and down, and it's some of the traffic that drives entirely too fast on this street. Also, the intersection of Westford and Technology is already terrible. It's awful to get out of there, and I've thought that a traffic light is needed. For that, but that's neither here nor there. So, you know, I I recommend everybody really take a look at what's going on in this neighborhood. There's, it is a neighborhood, and there's not a lot of extra space for extra traffic. Like Jeff said, the parking lot is not big enough for a a facility. Like Jeff said, the parking lot is not big enough for a facility like this. Um, it's just, it's just not like, like he said, you guys said that you would have, based on my notes, thirty-six spaces. But, but ten of those, seven to ten of those at any time are going to be taken up by your staff. So everyone gonna park, where the delivery is really going to be made. It didn't look like in the rendering that I saw that the deliveries were going to be made on Westford Street, which means they're probably going to fall to the back door of Carl Street. Is there room enough there for this? Um, and I, I guess that's all my thoughts. I, I just wanted the the board to know that there are residents in this community that do not agree with this and would appreciate your consideration on the traffic and the parking, not wanting the, the parking to overflow and infiltrate into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Anybody else like to speak?
Um, I'd like to say something.
Sure, name and address.
Yeah, hi, I'm Robin Altman. I live at um, on Carlton Place as well. And um, just um, totally against um, this building um, and this business being put in this location. Mainly because of the traffic implications, um, like we have all mentioned. Um, Carl Street is a, a very, very narrow street and um, people fly up and down it. Um, adding the traffic of a dispensary is only going to um, input that street further. Um, I worry how the ambulances are going to get up and down. Um, we can't even pass. Um, it's basically single um, single street um, and very, very narrow. So I'm worried about that. Um, I'm worried where the traffic and the parking is going to overflow to if they're going to be allowed to park on Carl Street. Because that is where um, you know, we as residents um, also use the street park on. I'm wondering whether that's gonna, um, where they're going to be allowed to park if they're not, um, if there are not enough spaces in the parking lot. And um, mainly, you know, traffic backup on Drum Hill Road as well um, is just going to be a nightmare. It's a traffic nightmare as it is and adding a dispensary right there is just going to further, you know, make that a nightmare. And I think that's basically it. Um, I, I am a resident here. This is my home as well. I've been here for five years. So um, I was not happy with the comment that uh, I believe it was the attorney um, made um, as far as it's um, not a single-family home neighborhood. So that really did not sit well with me. So I wanted on the record, I do oppose um, the location of um, of this dispensary. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I would. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Just give your name, please.
My name is George Luster. I'm the owner and the director of the video that was named in the twelve one West Street site. I, I just want to confirm what I did here earlier from George Goodall saying that I was next year. I, I have a lease. And I believe he said I was done there. The last time my lease was renewed. And this is the first idea of not the, the dispensary, but this is the first idea that I'm done there. I've been there at this location for twenty-three years with never a problem. The traffic can be a horror show and I'm totally with Jeff. Uh, what he, uh, West Street, especially in the afternoon with school buses. And later, worse again, as I've had clients leave my dance studio anywhere from on going towards Wood Street and over the road bridge, Route one thirteen. And it took them forty-five to fifty minutes just from there. And now the new market basket opening and the big issue is the bridge. Once again, that's been more traffic. So yes, there is a huge problem there. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is in the random, uh, the planning board had online, it states that the dispensary all on the first floor. And then when I asked my building manager about that, he says, no. They're taking the whole first floor and the whole bottom floor, which goes to what Jeff is saying about them also with more spaces needed. So there's a lot of things that I'm totally with Jeff with this. There's a lot of inconsistencies. And I'm also right behind him, a hundred and twenty percent with Carl Street. I'm in a two-way street. It's more like an alleyway when you're heading towards the end of it. Towards, towards West Street to Wood Street. But that's, that's all I wanted to say. Very, very, with a lot of these things and it's just not right.
Thank you, sir. Any like, anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Anyone else? Hey, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members. Have any questions or comments?
Chairman, I have a comment. Um, I think Mr. Brown brings up some very legitimate points regarding uh, some of the information that's conveyed to us. And I, I want to reference two things. One uh, memo from Jared Alves, our senior planner on July fourteenth, twenty twenty. And should be specifically addressed on Natasha Vance, who's our transportation engineer, her observations. And I'll cite just two of, of nine or ten uh, the suspension of the enactors who presented to us item number three. Uh, she states, the narrative states, the retail dispensary will be one thousand one hundred and fifty-one square feet. And the T I state, T I A states, that the retail dispensary will be two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square feet. The applicant should confirm, which is correct. And the kind of a large difference, item four. She states, the narrative states, there will be fifteen to twenty full-time employees and five to ten part-time employees. The T I S states that there will be seven to ten employees. The application, the applicant should confirm, which is correct. This will affect our, and she goes on and gives a little bit more detail. Uh, you know, it's the information is, is suspect. And I think before I want to vote, I want to clarify regarding that. And the last thing I want to reference is Jeffrey Dirck's report in this and this associates and corporate. And we all know Jeff, he's done a lot of good work around the city. Uh, but I just read part of the last paragraph of his report. He states further, the applicant has not offered an operation plan of specific improvements to address the identified operational safety along the Westwood Street farm that were identified as part of the May twenty twenty T R T I R update, you know, such things as maybe uh, I, I appointment only, just to manage this situation with the is what he's referencing there. He has a lot more here to say about things being unclear. I want to say the effective project, I think. The applicant needs to clarify some of these issues and information before I'm ready to vote on it. Address this.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. And the other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, similar to Mr. Lockhart's comments. Um, I know the, the traffic engineer for the applicant uh, this evening kind of uh, gave some, some updates to, to uh, some of the numbers that were provided in the, the traffic study that was provided to us. Um, quite frankly, we received Jeffrey Dirck's uh, memo today. Um, and uh, I, I just think there are some inconsistencies, some things that have to look at, uh, that we have to look at. I, I, on Carl Street, I have to ask the question. I was there this morning. Um, down Technology Drive, I went for a nice stress test. I started, that's how I started my day today at a uh, on Technology Drive. But um, in, I noticed there's some, the parking that I noticed on Carl Street and probably to Mr. Brown. Is that related to Princeton Properties? Because there wasn't, I didn't notice parking upwards the exit and entrance of this site here this evening that we're discussing. But there was cars and even on Saturday morning, when I went out there, there were cars parked on Carl Street, but towards the Princeton Property area. So I'm just, just curious if, if your, if your site overflows into there. I, I just trying to get a feel for what's going on over there.
Sure, there's, there's parking uh, by several uh, commercial operations. The Wynn Property to the right of Carl Street has some on-street parking that they use. We have some on-street parking that uh, takes up some of that space. I guess heading uh, southerly um, on one side. And on the other side, at least at this building, they used to be, I don't know if it's still there, Mary Maids, it was a maid service. He used to have very uh, number of vans that would queue up on the side, the same side as the, as the facility. And uh, Cronos used to be in the major building to the right. And so they parked some on the street as well. So it really was a combination of things. Obviously with COVID, you're not seeing as much of the parking exterior, especially related to the commercial operations. Um, when you went for your stress test this morning. So it's, it's a, a number of contributing factors.
Okay, all right. Um, no, I just, again, uh, similar to Mr. Lockhart, I, I really uh, would like some responses to Mr. Dirk's memo. And uh, and obviously to give uh, the city's traffic engineer, Natasha Vance um, um, more time to really review this material, I think, based on the memo here from uh, from Jeffrey Dirk. And also, I think the updated um, numbers that were provided this evening as well. Uh, you know, I appreciate all the uh, the speakers here this evening. But you know, the security plan really uh, and we make that clear, it has to be signed off by the city's police department. Uh, and we had the recycling sign off and the fire department. Uh, certainly, we understand the background of uh, of the legalization of these facilities and uh, in the host agreements to the communities. But really, this was the crux of this development here this evening, or this proposal was really uh, what's going on with the uh, with the traffic plan. And uh, so I think that really needs to be looked at. Uh, and I think that's uh, several uh, sites that are being proposed, that, that's a sensitive issue. Uh, and I just think we need to be taking a look at that. Uh, and I just wish, I think it was a little bit uh, disconnected or disjointed the way the material was presented. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Any other board members, any questions, comments?
This is member Chang. And uh, oh, I, I wish to ask the city engineer on, on like, whether there are any plans um, with the city to uh, to improve, uh, let's say Carl Street and uh, also the uh, intersection in Technology Drive beyond what's there uh, right now. And also I, I understand that the parking in Carl Street on one side is, is making it narrower. So whether uh, there, like um, what's, what's, what's their perspective in terms of like uh, uh, traffic flow and, and the status of the parking there at the moment?
Hi Caleb, were you uh, addressing that to me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, sure. Uh, so I'm Natasha Vance. I'm the transportation engineer for the city. Um, as a, a couple of the members have mentioned, I did have some comments. Um, and I thought there were some inconsistencies and it was, so it was just hard to tell. I didn't do a very deep dive into the trips because I wasn't sure um, the trip generation, because the, the square footage was different. Um, so to, to answer your question, Caleb, um, as far as I know, there is not any planned improvements along Carl Street um, or at Technology Drive. Uh, I, I would note that um, it is a very congested area. It is a place that is, um, it is very difficult. Um, if you're trying to turn left, particularly out of Technology Drive. Uh, someone mentioned that there's a possibility that a signal might be warranted. Um, that may be the case. I, I would note that this, this development doesn't generate enough traffic compared to the current volume of traffic to um, to make it that a reasonable request from this particular applicant. I think there's about twenty-four thousand trips today on Westford Street, which is a very high volume. Um, and uh, and this trip, this um, development generates somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred trips, you know, once we have that sort of hammered out. But um, so to my knowledge, there, there aren't any plans to make improvements at those locations.
And uh, oh, thank you, Natasha. And also want to follow up on um, what's the status of the street parking on Carl Street right now? I, I, I see that there are markings that faded more or less. And so are those um, uh, designated street parking that is open to any, anyone in the public?
Um, I would have to confirm by looking at the ordinances, but as far as I know, it is um, that's all public street parking and not designated for any particular building or uh, um, commercial.
Oh, thank you for clarification. Um, uh, I, I, I think I, I confirm to other members that this needs to, uh, the numbers have to be hammered out so that we, we, we at least have a coherent basis to, to evaluate this project and the uh, its uh, tr- transportation impact in terms of traffic and parking as well. Uh, another, just, just putting it out there for now, I also noticed the uh, the uh, screening for the dumpster being uh, dilapidated. So I, I, I think uh, there's two parts to this. One part is what's the um, uh, if there's a part of the security plan or, you know, regarding disposal of uh, any sensitive material and, and also general trash uh, servicing and also uh, if, if there are plans to uh, to improve the uh, the, the, at least the screening around uh, or make a more um, I would say clean uh, uh, area around the uh, trash dumpster. So this is for the, the question for that.
I, 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 this is Attorney Theodore. I, I think that we can, we can go ahead and enhance the uh, the screening around the dumpster. Uh, uh, again, we're, we're leasing the property. Uh, but, but I'm sure we would have permission from the uh, landlord to do that. I don't see that as an issue.
Oh, uh, and also do you have an answer to regarding like um, if there will be any, any uh, dis- disposition of, of uh, the uh, products or sensitive products, whether you would take care of it uh, in another way?
There, there is no waste of the retail product that would be placed. It is illegal for the, the retail dispensary to throw product out. Uh, the only thing that can be done with product that is not sold would be returned to the supplier. So that product is never placed in a dumpster. It is never thrown out. That would be against the law.
Well, thank you. And also, uh, just to follow up since we were talking about the product. So uh, you mentioned that everything will be packaged and nothing will be open on site. So I assume that uh, that is how you address the odor mitigation, since there will be, I guess, no odor if no one opened the package.
Yeah, no, no, they're uh, they're not permitted to open any packages onsite on the premises at all. Every package that is brought in and every single product, whether it's the flowers, whether it's edibles or anything, is in a, is in a sealed container. So there are no odor.
All right. Well, thank you. That's all the question I have.
Thank you, Caleb. Anybody else have any questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I think at this point, I, I don't have the right information to make a judgment tonight. So I think the applicant could uh, further define what is Further define what is exactly going on there. So we can make an intelligent decision. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich. The only comment I have is I know the applicant didn't outline the technology of the odor control in the facility. I know you're saying everything was it's going to be wrapped, but I think we still should have some presentation on the odor control. We've done that at every other marijuana site, whether it's been cultivation or recreational. I think we should have some background on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll we'll go ahead and and do that. And. I understand, given the fact that we received this traffic report today from Princeton Properties. And only had today to digest it in order to to confront it and to rip off it. We do need sufficient time to go ahead and and rebut this traffic report. And I and I think we did respond, even though Jeff stated that we didn't, we did respond. To comments from DPD and submitted those, but I think we should be far more comprehensive than those response. Which is our intention to do that. I think there has to be a detailed rebuttal. More information and also some type of traffic study in the area. You know, 1,000 apartments there adds to the traffic there significantly. And this is an extremely important application for my client and important for the city. So I think we should have, we we appreciate the suggestion of the members of the board. To have provide more information, give you a more more information to give a a a make a. An informed judgment on this.
If if I could.
Joe, you want to say something?
I just wanted to add one, just just to put a finer point on what George was trying to say, and I and I appreciate the context, I appreciate feedback. I think it's always important. To hear these things and and so. To the extent that it does make sense for us to provide you with additional insight, we most certainly will. And but with that said, I do think in as a backdrop, it ought to be considered that there are a variety of other. Businesses that could go there, particularly, you know, drive-throughs and a variety of others. Much more significantly impactful, much more significant number of trips per day that could go there, perhaps even by ride. That, you know, we're talking about having the opportunity to really influence a whole lot of flow. That a municipality would never otherwise have. And so when you're comparing apples, apples to apples or apples to oranges, I think it's important that. This is a great opportunity for an applicant in the adult-use marijuana space to present. And to hear feedback and to incorporate that feedback into an overall plan in a collaborative way. Fortunately, that's the opportunity here in this case, whereas in some other businesses that that may have, could have, but most likely would have in the event that we are. Hopefully not, but unsuccessful. You know, this is, this is something that the the city does have a whole lot of ability to to oversee and control. And as I started in my comments at the beginning, I'll just simply reiterate. This is a five-year application, it's a five-year license, it's not a license that's forever. We hope it's a license that's for the next 25 years, but in the event that all of the greatest fears come to fruition. The city has the the ultimate right to say, thank you for the last five years, but we're done. That's not always the case as well. So context is important, and I just wanted to provide that as a final thought and appreciate all of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, may I may I interject one more one more point?
Absolutely, Caleb.
Well, thank you for the response from the applicant, and I want to, I want to remind remind that there is a suggestion about the hay row model that that. And, you know, whether is applicable to in this project and also. A reminder for incorporating public transportation as well as, say, biking, even though I know that street is not ideal for that. Mode of travel into the transportation plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. So getting back to. George, are you looking for additional more time? How much more time do you think you would need to come back before the board?
Um, I'm hoping we can get this together for the next meeting. And I think we'll find out, August 17th is the next meeting. So that we can put together, tie up the loose ends here, and answer the traffic report that was brought in today. And then also. You know, give you the information, the additional information that that ties up any of the inconsistencies. How does the agenda look for the 17th, Mr. Chairman?
I'd have to ask Fran on that. Fran, how do we look for the August 17th meeting so far?
Let's look.
Is that doable for us?
Um, yeah, I think we can accommodate it on that agenda.
Okay, so we have a request before the board for continuous to August 17th? What's the request of the board?
Chairman, I'm making motion to continue the hearing until the August 17th meeting. Second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your input this evening. We appreciate it very much.
Good time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to move along to a final public hearing of the evening.
Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, well, I'll let you, how about you, you say the address first and then I.
You may, and you can say it now, Caleb, if you have something, go ahead. If you have any to Roger Street project, go ahead.
So I would like to recuse myself on this project.
Okay, thank you. So that will be for the 671, 683 Rogers Street, correct, Caleb?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a site plan review and a special permit for 671 and 683 Rogers Street. Pure Lowell Inc. is seeking site plan review and special permit approval to open a recreational marijuana dispensary at the above address. The property is in the regional retail zoning district. And the use requires site plan review approval under section 11.4.2, section 8, and a special permit under section 12.4.0. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Joseph Clamore, representing Pure Lowell Inc. Will be trying to be mindful of the time here, and we appreciate the opportunity to present. The applicant is seeking a special permit with site plan review for a proposed retail marijuana dispensary. At 671 and 683 Rogers Street. Now, the principals of Pure Lowell are Jim Steteris, Andrew Steteris, and Todd Brady, who are with us this evening. Also with us to present details of the site and building are David Utlesman, if I pronounce that correctly, the architect. Ree Sullivan, civil engineer. Ken Krim is also our traffic engineer. We also have a head of security, Mitch Suzanne, who is here to answer any questions, will not necessarily be presenting. And I'd like to give you just a brief overview, and then we'll have our experts testify, and then perhaps at the end I can give you a brief summary. The applicant has signed a host community agreement with the city and has had their community outreach meeting on June 11th. The applicant has also received invaluable comments and suggestions from the Belleville Neighborhood Group, and we thank them for their input and assistance. Just a brief background of the project, the applicant is under agreement to purchase two properties, abutting 671 Rogers Street and 683 Rogers Street. The purchase is subject to successful permitting of this business. If it's approved, the current structures at both addresses will be raised and the lot will be combined. And a brand-new, attractive retail building will be constructed. The proposed new building will be a single-story building, 3,750 square feet, approximately 50 by 75. The lot which will contain it is approximately 46,775 square feet. The site will be completely redone and landscaped. DPD has reviewed the application, the plans and our related documentation, and provided us with their comments and suggestions. And the applicant agrees with all the comments and has implemented the recommendations by updating the plans. And materials as needed, and we've been able to submit most of those materials back to the DPD. Just to quickly review and respond to the DPD recommendations in the general comments section of their letter dated July 14th. Number one, they noted that conservation has already approved the project and issued an order of conditions at their June 24th meeting. Lowell Fire Department has approved the application without question or comment. The solid waste and recycling approved the application without question or comment. We've not yet received the Lowell Police feedback, but our detailed and comprehensive security plan was submitted to them. We would request that the end of this, if the board were inclined to approve, that the or subject of police department sign off as a condition. Also, the mature trees will be noted on an updated landscape plan to be approved by DPD. This was also a condition of a conservation approval. We did have an opportunity to submit a landscape plan with the new plantings. But not yet identified the mature trees on the landscape plan that will that will come in shortly. The lot does comply with the landscape open space requirements set forth in number four. A COVID-19 plan has also been submitted to DPD in number five. Importantly, they pointed out that sidewalk should be added, and the applicant has agreed to add sidewalk and has placed it on the plan. Applicant is willing either to construct the sidewalk, if that's the desire of the city, or to contribute the funds to the city for construction. We've added bike storage to the plan, we've added rideshare parking to the plan. So those are the DPD comments that have been agreed upon and submitted by way of the new plan. By way of the transportation comments, there's a note that the traffic counts were in February prior to COVID-19. So they reflect so-called normal traffic and not the not the post-COVID traffic. The exit to the site will be right turn only, it'll be signage to that effect, but also to encourage the right-hand and right-hand turn only. Pork chop island directing the traffic right has been added to the plan. There was also comments suggesting we should consider a designated left-hand turn lane into the site. And the applicant is willing to provide that if the city so desires it, and if the DOT should approve it. That's somewhat out of our hands, but whatever we're directed to do by either the city. Or DOT. The applicant agrees to. So if there is an opportunity to fit a left-turn lane into the site, we're happy to do so. And subject, of course, to DOT approval. Again, and the fourth sidewalk has been added. The parking appears more than sufficient based upon the zoning. Of the property and the anticipated demand, and the engineer is going to discuss and comment further. Snow storage has been shown on the plan. We believe this is sufficient snow storage, but in the event of an abnormal storm or too much snow. They're willing to truck the snow off the site if necessary. Question regarding deliveries under number seven, delivery should only be about two or three times a week, van-type delivery vehicles. We also provide a SWP analysis to demonstrate the vehicle delivery accessibility. The vehicles are relatively small, so they should get in and out of the site very easily. There's an enclosed loading area on the site for security. Again, the bike rack and rideshare options have been added to the plan, and they pointed out we had a typo on our traffic study that has been corrected. So that was a brief study. The engineer and the traffic engineer will provide more details, but first I'd like to introduce you to Jim Steteris. One of the owners would like to address the board on behalf of the owners, describe their business.
Thanks, Joe. Actually, Todd Brady, my business partner, will be speaking on behalf of Pure Lowell right now.
And and thanks, Joe, and thanks to the planning board for taking the time tonight to review our project. We are the team here from Pure Lowell Inc. As Joe had mentioned, we have been issued a host community agreement by the city of Lowell. For the location of 671, 683 Rogers Street, the operator retail establishment. Our team is very experienced in operating regulated markets. We also have broad experience in recreational marijuana. We currently own and operate a facility in Colorado, which can keep big retail marijuana without any compliance infraction. And has a standing relationship with the local and the state authorities out there. We've all issued a group community statement by the city of Lowell for, you know, cannabis operation, new factory facility. As well as a provisional license by the Cannabis Coal Commission for this facility in Lowell, which we are currently in the construction phase for. In addition, our team owns and operates a bar restaurant in the city of Boston. Which is a regulated license managed by the city and the liquor control board. We understand how to operate in the regulated marijuana industries and like have a hand on strong. Operate retail dispensaries Rogers Street. In addition to the materials that we've reviewed, we spent a lot of time with the city of Lowell, as well as the Belleville Neighborhood Association with. City of Lowell. Some of the highlights include. The improving the existing at 671, 683 Rogers Street through building a retail structure, which is highly secure, ADA compliant. And adds additional improvements to the site, including sidewalks, etc. We plan on hiring Lowell residents as a priority. We will be contributing 3% of our revenue to the city of Lowell. In addition to that, we will be donating 1% of our profits to local charities in the city of Lowell. We have a large parking lot, which can handle any hustle traffic we have and anticipate overflow. We plan on expanding a pre-order platform, reduces checkout times and further reduce any parking issues. We will open with appointment only, and we plan on working with the city of Lowell to ensure the traffic and parking impact is minimal. And as. That operation gets underway, we will work with the city to lift the appointment only as they have done. We plan on operating in a highly secure location with anti-security, ensuring minors, untight consumption and other illegal activity will not be tolerated. And we will spend a lot of time with the Lowell PD and our security team to ensure it's held to the highest standard. We also have a robust odor mitigation plan, specific odor. Holding, you know, engineered infrastructure to reduce any odors throughout the facility as well as on the outside. Possibly impact to the butters. In addition to myself and my two part operating partners, Jim and Andrew, so here is, we have a very strong team here from right. We which we believe has a well-thought-out plan and a suitable dispensary. As Joe mentioned, we have Ken and Bree from Bayside Engineering, and Udelman, our architect from Udelman Associates, and Mitch Suzanne from ECDM Security. Currently managing the security at both of those entries. Thank you, and we look forward to answering your questions. Any questions we have?
And I think we're going to have the architect, David, up next.
Sorry, one second. I'm going to just quickly share my screen if I can. Assume everyone's hearing me.
Yes.
Thank you. So just, you know, we should have up in front of you, there we go. Up in front of you, the floor plan of the proposed building. 37,500, excuse me, 3,750 square feet. It's late at this point in time, pardon me. 75 by 50 is our main floor of the building. As was noted, we also have on the end of the building a secure loading area that is 12 by 24, which is about another 288 square feet of building. Plan is that vehicles can pull inside of this and do any loading or unloading for the facility. In terms of our layout, similar to discussions you've heard before. In terms of our layout, similar to discussions you've heard before, we have a larger interior waiting space that allows for some queuing to occur in here. People entering and coming into the facility will have ID check done at this location. Will then be held and queued until space opens up onto the dispensary floor and then will be buzzed into that location. You'll see from our plan, we've actually accommodated at this point in time quite a few point of sale stations. We have eleven stations on here that allows us to move population through the sales floor relatively quickly. And then out through a secure exit here, which is again viewable from the security's location. So that gives us control of any activities inside. Beyond that, all of our other spaces are back of house spaces that are keeping access and are for employees only. The building itself, interior wise, will again be a very modern finish with new materials. It's a, you know, high-end look for the store here. And our exterior, which I'll just quickly go to here. We're looking at raised ceiling with the slope ceiling above the main dispensary floor here. This would be our Rogers Street elevation here. Higher clear story windows so that we don't have security issues or vision into the floor space here. It allows some natural light in for better energy usage inside of the building. And again, good vision and sights into any of the waiting areas here, just so that we have access and the guard has ability to see in and out and around this whole property. The back to see here, the secure garage for bringing materials in and out. Combination of a wood look siding product along with a horizontal potentially metal siding and then a smooth panel siding to give some interesting variation. And with that, I will stop my share and hand that over to Ken for discussion on the site.
Good evening again, Ken Coram from Bayside Engineering. Bree Sullivan of our staff is also with us tonight. Brady primarily prepared the site plans. And I did the, I supervised, I should say, the preparation of the traffic impact and access study for this site, which was prepared by Bayside and has a date of June sixteenth, twenty twenty on it. Again, we did a complete traffic impact and access study. We did our traffic counts. They were also, they were done in February of this year, twenty twenty, before the COVID pandemic hit. And as Natasha Vance indicated in her comment letter, the accounts are adequate. We, February is typically a lower month, so we ended up raising them by about almost eight percent, represent average month conditions. Our primary focus was our site access. Right now, the two homes each have individual driveways, but they would be consolidated into one located at the western end of the site property, where you come in and have the parking and then have the right turn out only driveway heading back towards four ninety-five. Yes, there's our current site plan. The dispensary will be open seven days a week. Again, but this one, our proposed hours of operation right now are ten AM to eight PM. So we would have no impact on the morning peak hour, because even our employees probably would not be getting to the to the site two hours in advance of opening up the store. We did our accounts and we found, you know, basically Rogers Street just east of the site carries about twenty-three thousand six hundred cars a day, which was very similar to what Westford Street carries. We did a crash study analysis about the three study area intersections. And the most crashes we found were thirty-one that occurred over a five-year period at the signalizing intersection of Rogers Street with Douglas Road and the Phoenix Avenue. It was less than the statewide average in terms of significance. But that's also one intersection that is currently undergoing some improvements as part of a four intersection Route thirty-eight corridor study that actually Bayside did the design plans for for Mass DOT. And in terms of what's happening at that intersection, you may have seen some things happening. I'm not sure where they are in finishing that job for this intersection, but they're going to redo the pavement markings, install LED pedestrian signal heads and push buttons and clean and restore catch spaces and for the existing drainage system as part of that signal intersection improvement project. As with the other study, we looked at a twenty twenty-seven Horizon year. We contacted the Middlesex Council of Governments and they said appropriate growth factor was a half a percent per year for that area. And we contacted the city and at that time, no other projects were identified that we needed to include in the traffic projections. As you heard Todd state earlier, initially we will be opening by appointment only. Five appointments every fifteen minutes yields a rate of twenty customers an hour. So once we open, if all goes well, all those time slots will be filled and you could expect twenty cars coming in and twenty cars going out during those peak hours. Initially, eventually we expect, like with most other stores that have opened under the by appointment only basis, eventually we will go to a walk-in basis and the numbers could jump a little bit. However, one of the things when looking at the data for trip generation that is contained in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, they have only four studies right now have been reported to them, except for one hour, one, the evening peak hour where they have about twelve studies reported, very limited data. And what I have seen some consultants do is when you have a dispensary that is larger than three thousand square feet, they typically drop out the two very small studies. Once, one facility was actually only seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And the other one was about fourteen hundred square feet. And they indicate that, you know, when you're looking at something more than three thousand square feet, you should drop those two out because they're just not representative of what a three seven hundred square foot facility, which we have, would generate for traffic. So again, we did our analysis. Most of our traffic obviously will be going out to and from Rogers Street initially, and then it'll be dispersed, you know, amongst the public ways, east and west of the site. We did analysis of the future traffic signal. And this, these are pre-COVID numbers. So with the improvements and the, either under the walking scenario or the build by appointment scenario, the intersection is projected to operate at a level service B overall during the morning peak hours. No, I'm sorry, not morning, all peak hours. We looked at the weekday morning, the weekday evening and the Saturday midday, even though we have no impact during the weekday morning, because as I indicated earlier, the store is not going to be open. We looked at site distances in order to make sure and verify that this driveway can operate safely. And looking to the west, we have in excess of four hundred feet. Where based on the recorded speeds, we need a maximum of two hundred and twenty-three for stopping site distance. So that's adequate. And if you're looking to the east, you know, it's approximately two hundred and fifty feet or so to the intersection with Douglas Road and Phoenix Avenue. And so that traffic is all controlled by the traffic signal. As we said, our recommendations, you know, limit the driveway to right turns out, put it under stop sign control, maintain vegetation such that it doesn't impede site distances. And then going to Natasha Vance's transportation comments, we've agreed to add a sidewalk or pay for a sidewalk, pay to have a sidewalk installed. Side with snow and TGM. There is again, also, I might should have, I'm remiss in discussing this, but there is also LRTA has public transportation along this route, bus routes two and twelve that stop near the site. And what we talked about is the opportunity for employees or customers to use public transportation, but we took no reduction in traffic as a result of traffic, people using public transportation to get to and from the site. So that's a brief summary of the traffic study. Again, I'm sorry, the typo on page ten has been corrected. Just referenced a relocation from a previous study. So I will turn it back over to Joe and hopefully call it tonight soon.
Thank you, Ken, and Bree, she was going to discuss the site plan?
Yes, I can do that. You'll have to bear with me. My, my voice is a little off. I had surgery four days ago. So if it cracks, that's the reason why. Okay, let me switch to the site plan. So there are a couple of changes based on comments from, from the design review board. So basically, we've gone through permitting through, through conservation, and we got an approval on that last month. And there were a few changes according to comments that we got from the DRB. And so those comments were already reviewed by Joe. And I think Ken might have mentioned them with the sidewalk and the bike rack and the Uber lift parking. Besides that, we can see the site here has generally a one-way flow through the site. We enter the site and exit the site here at the, at the north side of the site. And then the flow is around this way in a counterclockwise fashion and then back out as we've already reviewed. The, the exit is only right turn only. There is going to be a sign here that says right turn only and a no left turn sign across, across the street from the exit, as well as this newly added pork chop mountable island in the middle, channelization island. So we basically developed the site plan such that the site storm water will be handled completely onsite. We are not going to have any increase in discharge off the site as it currently exists now. So currently it's a, it's a double multifamily lot. And there is some turf grass lawn and there is some volunteer vegetation growth in the back. We're going to be removing some of that. We're certainly removing all of the lawn and some of the tree growth in the back, but we'll be supplementing that with the landscape plan, which is forthcoming. With that plan, we're going to replace the, the larger diameter trees. We've made a commitment to that with the Conservation Commission. It's actually in the order of conditions that we have to provide those trees. We have to replace those trees. So basically, in accordance with the regulations, we are providing more than, more than enough parking. The actual spaces required by the zoning regulations are seven point five spaces based on our floor area. We are actually providing forty spaces. So that should be more than adequate for to meet zoning as well as to meet the required trip generation. So rather than go over the, the drainage plan, just leaving it at that, this is a site plan review. Just suffice to say that we do meet all the regulations with respect to stormwater standards in the state, as well as the local standards that are set forth by the commissions and by the zoning regulations. As far as demands on services, our, our water and sewer flows are actually projected to be less than the existing load from these two multifamily dwellings. Slightly less, not by much, but it's not a huge load anyway with respect to water and sewer loads. The, the landscape plan also meets, fully meets the, the standards the, that are set forth in the zoning regulations and that are set forth in the site plan requirements for, for a facility of this type. So with that, I can turn it back to Joe. If you'd like to take it, take it over. If there's any questions, I can answer them in the question period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I believe that's the summary of our presentation and without giving the hour, I'm not going to go through each one of the criteria for special permit and site plan that you're all very familiar with, but just summarize by saying, we believe based on all the information we put forward, that the site plan has met all the criteria for safe and effective new business, applies with all of the zoning requirements, and we are going to respectfully request approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council. So at this point in time, I'll open it up to anybody from the public who wants to call in?
Mr. Chairman, can you see me? It's Peter, Peter Ocella, Thirty Park, Q Avenue, Lowell, Mass. You can see me?
Yes, Peter.
Okay, great. I'm, I live a few blocks away and have participated in several of the Pure Industries forums or public hearings on the project. I think the project has improved tremendously during the process. I think that's the good news. The real bad news that I think all of us attending these events noticed right away when the site was selected was that the vehicles entering, and you have to assume a lot of the entering vehicles will come four ninety-five. The vehicles entering would be needing to turn right at the point where Rogers Street merge, merges from two lanes down to one lane. So if you've ever driven that area, you, you probably have had the same experience that I have very frequently over there, which is that you either get people who don't know how to merge or you get people who are going to bully their way through and with some aggressive driving. So that location is a dangerous enough location to drive now. But I think when you add turning at that precise location, right about near Butmann Street on the opposite side, you've got a recipe for disaster. So I think I had suggested, not that I'm any traffic engineer, that maybe a somehow center lane, turn lane or something could be, you know, carved out of the road, because there might just be enough room there. I don't know that that will work, but it would be better than people just turning from the single lane and block, you know, stopping all the traffic while that happens and while they try to cross the, what, eastbound, I guess, traffic back toward four ninety-five to get over there. And I'd just like to throw in a, I really think that's a serious issue for this project. It is the most serious issue project, I think. And I have, I have been in touch with Natasha Vance about it, just, you know, and Todd Brady. Just not to surprise anybody about it, I think it's a fundamental defect in the project. What really, unfortunately, the city zoning prevented any access and probably What really unfortunately, the city zoning prevented any access and probably some wetlands rules from Phoenix Avenue. If this were on Phoenix Avenue, it would have worked a lot better, but it's a pretty dangerous location. And by the way, in the traffic study, there's a statement that the lane goes from two lanes. The Roger Street goes from two lanes inbound to one lane inbound. And then no follow-up discussion of the ramifications of that. And again, if you watch that area, particularly at busy times, you would know. Just one other point and that is the exit. I see there's an attempt there to try to have a curbing to force a right turn only to 495. I think that's a great idea. I'm sure they're committed to that. However, again, my amateur view of that is that if somebody wants to make a left, they'll find a way there. I really think there needs to be a very pronounced curve in that curbing to really force the cars to take a right back to 495. Otherwise you're going to have scofflaws who won't be thwarted by that configuration. So those are my comments. Other than that, the project's come a long way.
Thank you, sir.
I was hoping I could make a couple of comments. My name is Jim Heller from 54 Parkview. Right, I agree with Peter on his comments. I just had a couple of quick questions too. As far as the parking, I remember way back when, and again, I think this is much better. I was wondering how many employees are anticipated. I saw 11 stations where customers will be waited on. A person obviously having to check IDs at the desk. I'm guessing someone, you know, in the background room managing and possibly some other office help. I'm figuring this is looking at like about, is it around potential 14 or 15 employees on the site at any given time?
I think it's anticipated to be no more than 12 employees per shift.
Okay, so that basically will leave, somebody said 45 spaces, but when I was counting, I only saw 40 parking.
It is 40.
It is 40. Okay, so that will basically leave somewhere in the neighborhood of 28 spaces. Yet if where things stand right now with the turnover of people, I think we were looking at something along a 12-minute time period where folks were going to be in.
Yes.
I think that was it. So up to 55 people would get basically processed an hour through there. Okay. Again, I think everybody over in this neighborhood knows somebody that's either seen or been involved in an accident at this location. And what I would make a suggestion, because it, it's a difficult spot with just the traffic counts we have right now. And I would ask that maybe some type of independent review be taken of the traffic flow. Was brought to my attention that the intersection at Wentworth and Route 38 is rated about as bad as you can get. But traffic flow, I think I was told it was rated an F right there. And I mean, this is only going to make that one a little bit tougher. It's already at the point where pulling out a Parkview and taking a left on Route 38 is about one step below taking your life in your hands, except rush hour when it is taking it in your hands. And we have to avoid it. It's out of the question. So I, I think that this really needs, as far as what gets done, if we can do the left-hand only lane, I think that it is going to be the lesser of the evils. And I think this needs some further review and that's the end of my comment. Thank you for your time at this late juncture of the evening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak. Hello?
Hello?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you say your name? Can you have your name and just the record please?
Okay, my name is Richard Coffey. I live at 331 Parkview Avenue. I'm, I would like to agree as well, what Peter Rossello was saying as a previous speaker. It is a horrible traffic situation. I noticed that Bree was saying that she sees sort of a circular traffic pattern there, which she very clearly has on her chart, double arrows going down each aisle of the parking area. So which is it, Bree? So in besides that, let's say that you are going in a circular pattern and you're going to take a right-hand turn. You're doing a 180-degree turn in a very tight space. I don't think it's practical or even possible. So that exit where it's currently placed is just not workable. And I, you know, I just think that we're just looking for a lot of traffic problems there. I'm sure that the people that are from Lowell know how tough it is to merge coming up Roger Street. Maybe some of you guys that are from out of town are aware of that, but it is really bad. So I think it has to be a lot more work on the traffic pattern in this location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to some of those traffic questions?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I guess, yes, there will be two-way fault. The aisles have been designed for two-way traffic flow. I know Bree probably said that because we had had a discussion at one point where we talked about one-way circulation. But no, two-way circulation is proposed in both aisles. We have run Auto Turn, which is a software package. Yeah, we use the Ford Transit vehicle because that's the type of delivery vehicle that will be coming to and from the site. And that vehicle can circulate through the site. So we feel that we're comfortable with the design, the way a car can get through the site. We had looked at, you know, the possibility of trying to put a left turn lane into the site. However, we, we're fighting two issues. The overall narrowness of the right-of-way and the width of the road, plus the fact we have two lanes going eastbound, westbound through the intersection and then merging down into one lane. We recognize that as an issue that people are concerned about and well, they should be. But at the end of the day, this part of Roger Street is under the jurisdiction of the Mass DOT. We'd have to go to them to get an access permit for our driveway. And as part of our submission to Mass DOT, we will be submitting all our traffic information. And we would probably, you know, discussing with them, you know, what can we do to make sure that this is a safe situation? Because it is their road at the end of the day and they control the access to it. So as with every other project that's on Route 38, Roger Street or down into Tewksbury, Mass DOT controls that road and they're going to determine what we eventually have for an access. Initially, we can probably have a commitment as part of our review. As we've already indicated, we're going to start off with a by appointment only basis. And we can add a monitoring commitment to our, our study that, you know, once we're open under a by appointment only basis, until it is so determined that we can go to walk-in, we would monitor the flow and actually see, you know, what the queues are and, and see, you know, are we creating a hazard? But again, I, you know, Mass DOT is going to have the ultimate say in what the access looks like. How many employees? We answered that question. I like Mr. Heller's math, you know, process up to 55 people per hour. Anecdotally, I'm involved with several of these dispensaries and we're finding it's even a faster turnaround inside the dispensary for, for the purchase and sale. I've heard it's getting down to between eight and 10 minutes. So that's, that's a primarily a result of, you know, and I am no expert, believe me, as to what they sell and how it's used or anything. But from what I've heard, you know, you can order the stuff online and simply go there and pick it up. So you're in, you're out and you're on your way. So that's what I have in response and be glad to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Did anybody else, anybody else in the public want to call in? Anybody else? Okay, anybody else? Okay, so this time I'll turn it over. Any board members have any questions?
Chairman, I have one question regarding. You have a discussion with them regarding.
Have we had a discussion with the police department? Was that the question?
Yeah.
Yes, we've talked to Deputy Gollner about it. We just haven't gotten his sign off yet. We submitted the plan back in June. We've also met with him in the past when we got prior to getting approval for the cultivation facility. So we, we do know him and we have met with him. But obviously through the COVID, the last two or three months, we haven't been able to meet in person. So we haven't gotten final sign off from him. But we are expecting that soon, hopefully.
Oh, I know, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and just to the applicant, if you could put up on the screen the actual site plan, please. Great, thank you. Natasha, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, God bless you. So I just want some clarification on, you know, part of site plan review is, and it really is a critical of site plan review is access egress from the site. And, and that would be any site on the site new review. So just want some clarification. I'm, I'm looking at the revised plan here in the whole equation of Mass DOT as well as they apply for their permit. So I'm just trying to weigh what, what authority we actually have at this juncture regarding the egress and, and entry into the site. Because I do have some questions regarding this, but Natasha, if you could give us a little bit of where we stand as a board on this particular issue at the moment.
Sure. Yeah, so Mr. Cram is correct. This is Roger Street is a state road. And the state would ultimately have to decide whether or not this is an appropriate location for a turn lane. I have some concern given that it's only 200 feet from the intersection with Phoenix and Douglas Road. But it is something, it's, if I remember correctly, I believe the applicant committed to working towards that. But again, Mast dot would have to approve it. I think the city would be in support of it, assuming it was demonstrated to be a safe and appropriate option at this location. I do understand the, the neighbors, the neighborhood's concerns because this is a pinch point on the road where, you know, it narrows down and, and it can be difficult. This isn't a high crash location, which is, there's not a crash cluster here. So that's a positive thing. And I would also note that the, the Mast dot project that's currently ongoing at the adjacent intersection is a, was an H SIP project as well. So there should be an improvement in safety just by virtue of improving that intersection. But, but to answer your question, the city can't. I think that the, the board could probably require that the applicant pursue a turn lane to pursue to whether or not this is an appropriate and safe modification to the roadway pursuant to Mast dot approval. But the city does not actually have jurisdiction over this particular road and, and whether or not we can put a turn lane in. Like I, I can't re, I can't just re-stripe the road how we want it without Mast dot. Okay.
Now, just from my understanding though, do they still need to go for a permit for the curb cut?
I believe they have to get an access permit.
Yeah, so depending upon even what we approve here, there can be some issues with that.
Yes, correct.
Interesting. Now, to, to the applicant, looking at the revision, I'm looking at the, at the pork chop with the, the dedicated left, right turn out. But as I look at the, the point of entry, the way that looks like it's designed, even talking about a left turn in, it looks like you have to go past the pork chop to get turned in. So I'm just a little curious about the design there.
Mayor. Unfortunately, it's just the way the drawing is drawn. What you're seeing, those two thin lines are leaders that are pointing to the plan reviewer to say, okay, the approach is 12 feet wide. But it's, it's real, that's why you're getting that impression that.
I understand, but even the, the, the bubble, I guess, the, probably the color site plan shows the, the actual pork chop a little better. It still angles out in, in, in the, you see that? I, I'm. I know you can't see me, but I'm actually pointing to the roadway here on the screen. But as, as you attempt to take a, a left, see how this whole, I just, I, I question that. I just question that design.
Well, again, that, that Mass DOT will review that and that, that line should probably be a straight line perpendicular to Roger Street.
Yeah. Right. I mean, Natasha, as I look at that, is that, that doesn't seem like the proper design.
Yeah. So what my comment was, and I, and I think I agree with what Ken just said. My comment was like a half pork chop. So it would be a straight line to allow the left turns in and then the, the curve to prevent the left turns. And, and to the, to one of the neighborhood members' comments, there's only so much we can do to prevent people from, people who are, who are going to turn left are going to turn left, even if we do put Pork Chop Island in and, and put up a sign that says no left turn. But yeah, I, it would be shaped more, almost more like a, I probably not accurate, but a straight line and then a curve. But I think that that's a pretty simple modification.
I mean, there's been some success at the, with the Dunkin' Donuts and, and DCU is located on Bridge Street. And, and we have, we did exactly this and, and with the granite curbing.
Yeah.
And, and that has been effective. I travel that particular stretch, drawn and off a lot and that's, that has been effective. And again, perhaps maybe curve that a little bit more, but I mean, we take, we took some extremes with Walgreens on Middlesex Street. But, but even without the stanchions, without the ballads, we, we still, I, I think we can. I, I guess I'm a little concerned about the, the equation mass, you know, the Mass DOT plays in all of this. When do you go to Mass DOT for the, the permit?
We can go to Mass DOT in a week or two time. But generally we like to go with an approval in hand from the city.
Okay, just, okay, have to think about that as far as, I, I'd almost want to see what Mass, what Mass Dot wants to do with this. But now, if I could just bring up the elevation of the, of the building, the materials. I honestly thought we were going to see something a little more pleasing as far as the architectural design of the building. Have, have you worked with, with DPD on the, on the materials? You mentioned something about metal horizontal lines that we're looking at here. I'm just trying to get. I was surprised honestly to see the architectural look of this building.
Sorry about that, just messing with.
No, that's okay.
Not a problem. We, we are looking at, you know, a more modern building for the dispensary here. We are looking at, you know, you know, material, metal material was what we're thinking about it, corrugated metal or the primary siding, but you know, are willing to consider other options for it. The, the look was to, you know, give us some breakup of the facade for the size of the building that we had here. And felt it was appropriate for the retail and the type of retail use that we were doing.
I, I mean, I like the idea of breaking up the facade and we, we use that, that technique is used all over the city. Just the materials and the look was.
And so that, you know, what, what we are thinking here is, this is actually what we, we have discussed a wooden look product. I have something in mind. I have something in mind, which is a, which is a product from Nishihao, which is a cement board that has a wood texture and print to the exterior, so that gives it some warmth to it. These panels here, we were talking about them being a painted gray panel. So that gives us some differentiation there. The black framing again is to really kind of jump and give it some, some punch to the overall look. We've got this awning line that runs across and kind of wraps around the corner here again to, you know, give a further breakup to it. So yeah, it's not a traditional New England building.
Absolutely not, yeah. Do you have a?
That's not what we're selling here.
I understand. Do you have a streetscape that, and I didn't see something that I?
A rendering of it?
Yeah.
I have not done a rendering at any point in time.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Natasha, just really quick, do you think any type of an independent traffic review would be beneficial at this stage or is, I mean, when, I think it's, what it's whittled down to is a real safety issue with regards to entering and exiting the site, but I, I is.
Yeah, and so I guess Member Forchet, it seems like the applicant is willing to, and you know, entertain the, the, adding the turn lane, the question is really more whether or not Mast dot will entertain adding the turn lane. Am I, Ken, am I categorizing that correctly?
Oh, you are absolutely correct. And Mast DOT will do its own review of this application.
Yeah, so that, that was actually going to be my, my comment, my response to Member Forchet as well, that Mast dot will review the, it'll, it will basically be like a peer review when Mast dot does the review.
All right.
All right, thank you. I just, for, for what it's worth, I, I would prefer, and I, I know the applicant would like to have a decision in hand, I would prefer to, to get the results of Mast dot's review of the project before I would make a decision. That, that's just my, my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Viset. Any other board members have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would prefer to hear what Mast dot says about that curb cut and the turning lane before I could make any decision on this site.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Any other board members' questions?
All my questions have been answered, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? No?
All set up.
Okay, thank you, Richard. All right. So what's the request of the board? Do we? It sounds like a couple of board members want to wait to see what Mast dot does. And we still haven't got the local police to sign off as of yet, which is a crucial point that we need.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a streetscape too as well. And I would love the applicant to talk with DPD about some alternative material for the building.
So you want to make a motion to continue then?
Yeah, I just, I guess, would, Fran, getting back to you, I know we asked the same question with the, the prior application for August 17th. Would it make sense to have both of these projects on for August 17th at this point?
That should be okay.
Then the next question to the applicant is, is that sufficient time to go to Mast dot?
Ken, can you answer that?
Yeah, I, I seriously doubt with the current pandemic situation that Mast dot, even if we were able to turn around and submit an application tomorrow, that they would be able to reply in four weeks' time.
Okay, we continue to it at September meeting.
Let me ask the question, Ken, because you're familiar with it. Is there any chance that they would give you an answer by the August meeting? Because I'm thinking if we continue it to August, but we don't have an answer, then perhaps we have to push.
There's always a chance.
Okay. Yeah. Chance hit the lottery too, yeah. So, I mean, we'd be safe to put on, what, what, what's our first date, September?
September 10th.
September 10th?
Yes.
Can we be safe to go?
It's a Thursday, that's a Thursday.
Oh, that's because of the holiday, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, because Labor Day is late this year, that's right. Would September 10th work?
Why not take the August and then if you need to, you?
Well, then if we take the August, then we put, then we stop, other people can come on the agenda.
Understood.
Because we kind of, kind of cap it because usually if we were in City Hall right now, this meeting would have been over two hours ago, they're not allowed to stay past 10. So now we're pushing into tomorrow morning as we go right now. So if we started it, they came in at 10 o'clock, we would have cut you off and we'd all get up and go home.
Mr. Chairman, given the un, the unlikelihood of getting an answer by August 17th, I'd probably suggest the September 10th. And as I understand it, then, you know, we'd become first on the agenda.
Sure. I don't think we have, is that okay, Fran? Do we have anything else on September 10th yet?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
You'd be fine.
Okay. We can always try to put them first on the agenda. I'll take it first on the agenda. Sometimes it might be first on the agenda, but I'll always take them first, but okay. So, Mr. Viset, getting back to you, do you, have you, we have any problems with making a motion to continue until September 10th?
Yeah, we'll put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to continue until September 10th. We have a second. Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, cheers. Any opposition here, none? The motion carries. Good luck and we'll, good luck with Mast DOT. Hopefully I'll answer our questions and resolve some of the issues. Wish you well. Good luck. Okay, moving along on the agenda. We just have a few other matters. I know we have further comments on planning board members. I know, Mr. Viset, you have something to address to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to really keep it brief, but.
You've heard that already.
I, I, I did want to give everybody a brief update, begin the Rock Bridge with all of the, the development taking place over the last quite a few years on Middlesex Street and now with the market facet and the, the, the temple on Pataca Boulevard. So we did have a, a meeting of the Rock Bridge replacement project that took place July 16th. And we had an overview of the next stage as the environmental review moves forward to determine the placement of the bridge. So there are three, three selections, proposals that they're, they're looking to move forward. And I think it was shortly after that, it was reported that our state senator had actually put some funding in place, hopefully for the construction of the bridge. But it's the, I think it's pretty, it, it actually feels like it's going to move forward to a point where we're going to see some real progress now at this, at this juncture. And we're looking at a timeline that I think puts it within an attainable situation. I mean, we're looking at environmental review, depending upon the placement they take, maybe 18 to 24 months. But then depending upon what they select, they could actually shorten that time. Then as long as we get funding selected, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we may be looking in five years, the possibility of, of something happening on it. So in, in the, in the life of a bridge, that's pretty, that's pretty quick, although it's been decades in the, in the making. But anyways, I, I will keep, we, we are going to continue to meet, there's going to be a public hearing, a, a public meeting, I believe in August, and they're going to reconvene the, the, this working group in September, I believe. And at that point, I think we'll have some, have some real results, I hope to be able to report back. But again, just to, to put it back on the radar that it is moving forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Viset, for that update. Any other board members have any further comments?
Just the historic one, we still have not met, the very quiet some of us. We do have two public hearings on August 10th. We'll be getting back.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody else have any comments?
I have a question and maybe Fran has more information, but Jared sent an email about a month ago about the Community Preservation Committee and appointing a member from the planning board. And I was just curious if that was on the agenda today or what the status of that was.
Yeah, so we have not had, heard any updates about the Community Preservation Committee. And we will definitely send along any updates that we have, but we have not heard from the powers that be regarding that. So yeah, I have no update.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know, Nate, you would express some interest. If you have, nobody would have any objection. I was looking for people that are interested to serve on other committees and where you are new on the board and showing interest. I, I would be happy to put that in the form of a motion so we could act quickly if in fact the, Fran, you do hear that they're, they're now ready to convene and looking for a member.
I was second to most. Motion is made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, cheers. Any opposition, having none? So we will.
Thanks, I'm excited.
And hopefully we'll send any information to them and hopefully they will get a hold of you. So hopefully Fran, that will move things along, tell them that the planning board acted at the request that they sent us and that we have picked a representative to represent our best interest.
Sounds good, I will.
Okay. So any, any further, anything else?
I, I remember last, last time we mentioned about some guidance to a tree removal and I understand it might take time. Is there any update on that regard? I, yeah, asking this stuff.
Um, yeah, so Jared and I have been doing some, you're referring to the significant tree. Research. Caleb. So Jared and I have been doing some research and we've been talking to Christine Clancy and we have a memo that we are preparing. We didn't put it on the agenda for this meeting because we figured this meeting was going to be really long, but we're hoping to have that prepared by the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Hey, any further comments from board members? If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Viset, second by. Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Or good morning.
Enjoy eight minutes left of the evening.
Thank you very much, everybody. A long meeting, thank you.
Good to see everyone, thanks. Bye.
Night.
Good night.